Good morning, everybody. And welcome to the School Board Special Meeting, March 14th, 2025. I want to officially call this meeting to order. There is no public comment for this particular portion of the morning. So I'm going to move on to our one and only business here for the special meeting before we begin the workshop today, and that is the approval of personnel appointment. Dr. Weisong, I'm going to give it to you.
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the personnel appointment.
So moved.
So motion is second.
Second.
Dr. Weisong? Oh, I'm sorry. Now we got a second. Did you want to explain what this personnel is?
Yes, and Board members, I appreciate your willingness to hold a brief special meeting so that we can get this done. The appointment today is for a new Executive Director of Human Resources. I am recommending the appointment of Dr. Christina Britton to that position. Dr. Britton has approximately 25 years of experience in the education community. She was employed by the school district of Manatee County as a teacher for several years, and then went on in other places to have a successful administrative career that has included serving as a school principal at all three levels in both district-operated and charter schools. She also has three years of experience as an assistant superintendent in a district that had an elected superintendent. And so she'll be bringing an incredible amount of school-level and district-level experience back to Manatee County. We're excited to welcome her back with a start date of March 31st, and thus the need for the brief special meeting so that we can get her approved and get the onboarding underway. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we all in Granicus on the special meeting or just the workshop?
I'm in.
You're in the special meeting? Okay. Just want to make sure.
I'm in the special meeting, too.
Okay. All right, so we're ready to do any comments from?
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment that I did request. I'd like to see the resume, just because.
You would like to see the resume?
Mm-hmm. I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to vote because of the recommendation, but I would like to see that resume.
Um, I'll just say kudos to staff, although there's a lot of applicants.
Yep.
And half, we got, you know, someone we feel qualified that's going to be able to replace Mr. Bailey, and so we know HR is extremely important. So I appreciate the hard work finding someone that's going to fit right into Manatee. So, um, we ready to? Ready to vote? All right, here we go. Approval of the personnel appointment to H.R.
I vote yes.
It's not going on the screen. I vote yes. There it is. Passes five to zero. All right, thank you for the special meeting. We are adjourned.
All right.
And you need some time for the workshop to flip it. Yep, no problem.
So we don't need to be in Granicus now?
We'll take.
For the workshop?
We'll take a five-minute recess.
Do you want to stay in Granicus so you can read your next talk?
All right, good morning. Sorry, a little technical difficulties there. Welcome back, like anybody left, to now our real workshop for today, March 14th, 2025. Officially call this workshop to order. I will jump into public comments. We've got one today is Stephen Zikafus. You want to come on up? And I will say, just as we've already spoke, you can come to the podium if you come around. But just for the public to know, we do have a scheduled workshop. We are going to put this on the workshop in April to discuss the Hassan Sales Tax. So just FYI, by the way, obviously no screen up top for your timer. You got it?
I got it.
Perfect. All right, thanks.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. Good morning, Board members, Superintendent Weisong, and community members. First of all, thank you for your leadership and commitment to public education. Your decision to hold an April workshop to explore how the half-penny sales tax can benefit all public school students, including those in charter schools, demonstrates your dedication to the School Board mission, which is to educate and develop all students. Today, you are considering zoning adjustments and accommodate for student shifts. It's important to recognize how charter schools play a key role in managing growth, ensuring resources follow students, and making the best of taxpayer dollars. School choice isn't just growing, it's transforming education in Florida. Over the past 20 years, charter school enrollment has increased by more than 1,000%, but this isn't happening in isolation. It's part of a larger movement. Across Florida, families are embracing a variety of educational choices. Private school scholarships, educational savings accounts, virtual school, homeschooling are expanding rapidly and giving parents more opportunities to choose the best fit for their children. This isn't just about numbers. These are real students, these are real families, they're real futures. Every choice is made for a reason, and every child deserves access to a great school that fits their needs. In light of shifting student populations, charters help manage school growth, ease overcrowding, and reduce the need for costly district expansions. Instead of overbuilding or closing schools, charter providers, charters provide a cost-effective alternative. And here's the key point. Charter schools build schools at a lower cost. If the district were to accommodate for the over 12,000 charter school students, that would come to a cost of almost $650 million. Charter schools could build roughly 70% of that cost, saving taxpayers up to $200 million in Manatee County alone. Charter schools have already saved taxpayers hundreds of millions by absorbing student growth without requiring costly new district construction. Here's a question. If 20% of the just over 8,200 projected new students outlined in the February 14th board presentation chose charter, private, or another school choice option, as history has shown in Manatee County, will the district need to expend the current and projected $700 million in taxpayer money? Has this been considered in the plan? If the half-penny sales tax was created to support public school infrastructure, and charter school students are public school students, for years, their families pay the same taxes, yet their schools have historically been left out of facility funding. Including charters ensures taxpayer dollars go farther while giving all students access to safe, well-maintained schools. This isn't about politics, it's not district versus charter, it's about students, it's about families, and it's about ensuring that every public student, no matter where their parents choose to put them, continues to have access to the high-quality learning environment they deserve. Right now, when families choose a charter, their tax dollars don't fully follow them. But when district rezones schools, funding follows the student. The principle is the same, the money should follow the child. If we already apply that logic across the district, why stop at charters? The money should follow the child. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes public comment for this morning. So let's jump into our workshop items discussion regarding Bylaw 0149.1, which is our Public Expressions Members and Proclamations. We discussed this on Tuesday with some of the revisions we wanted, and it looks like it was added at the end there, unless otherwise archived and maintained in the ordinary course of the Board's business. So it looks like that was satisfied. Does anybody else see anything else on here?
I feel comfortable with it.
Yeah?
I feel good with it.
Yes. Mr. Chairman?
I'm good.
Oh, okay. All right, so if we're good, we've obviously got the published from Tuesday. We're already, what, two days into our publish time? So, thank you very much, everybody who worked on that to get that done for us. Moving on, I have number two. Discussion of Policy 5120.02 implementation, obviously the rezoning implementation. Am I giving it to Mr. Chapman? You may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
With caution. No, I'm going to.
We're going to, we have a slide deck here to go through.
Dr. Weisong, did you want to say?
We don't have a slide deck.
If you don't mind, I'll just do it.
Yeah.
Good morning, Chairman and Board members. We're exactly where we should be in this process. Back on, a month ago, February 14th, we did the extended data analysis with you that demonstrated the need for this. You approved the authorization to proceed on February 25th. We've held five public meetings since then. Mr. Chapman took on the emcee duties, so the first part of this presentation is going to be kind of a recap of those public meetings, but really the purpose today is to give the five of you some time to talk about some of the questions and topics that you raised last month so that we can hear your thoughts and your guidance before we start the formal drawing process. So definitely a shorter presentation today with plenty of time to dialogue on two or three different topics where that conversation, that guidance, will be helpful to us as we enter the computer work phase of the process. So that's our, that's our goal today.
Thank you, Dr. Weisong. So like Superintendent just said, we are following Board policy here, you know, 5120.02. As I've mentioned at every public meeting, we're not just kind of, you know, kind of picking this up as we go along. We are following Board policy to the T, and like the Superintendent just said, we've essentially finished part two of that policy, which is the Superintendent coming to you to saying he's looked at the data, he's analyzed the growth, the enrollment, we need to activate the process, you all approve that, and then hold those public meetings. So I'm going to summarize the results of those public meetings as we end Section Two of this policy and now move to Section Three. So that's what this slide essentially says there in yellow is, you know, we've now had these initial public meetings there in yellow. So if you remember, we, uh, we created what's on our website to this day, which is manateeschools.net/rezoningprocess, which is a very easy way for the community to get all the information on this process. And as we continue throughout this process, we will keep posting information on that.
One second, sorry to interrupt. How would you all like for us to ask questions? Do you want it during? Do you want it after?
You can interrupt.
Okay. Well, so Board, just pop up when you need to.
Okay.
Ms. Bray.
Right, I'm on our website, and I'm trying to find the rezoning. I thought it would be right on the front page, and I don't see that. So where am I?
Sure. Well, I don't know if something just happened, but we'll see.
It was.
I see Find Your Career and all the other.
Ever since until today, it was popping up right away.
Just until a second ago, so I don't know when it just happened, Ms. Bray.
Right, yeah.
The timing of that was.
It is not on.
Not the best there, so I don't.
I mean, that should be like number one.
I agree. We'll fix that.
That's funny.
Right.
Hopefully, the team that's listening will fix that as we speak. Hopefully the team that's listening will fix that as we speak. So.
It's not Friday 13th. With all of our technology.
It's Pi Day.
I think it was just one of those.
I'm glad.
Leave it to me to find it, but I didn't do that in a negative way. I was like, okay.
No, you're right. I will tell you this, as you all know, you've been, I think the public knows about this. We are transitioning to a brand new website come June 1st. And we've been working very hard behind the scenes to, you know, move a lot of that data into that shadow site so that we can then launch on June 1st. So maybe that's what's going on right now on this Friday before spring break, but we'll, we'll fix that as we speak. So what will be on back on the district website here in under minutes is this front slider of residential attendance zones. When you press that, you go to this page that listed where our public meetings were. It listed the very lengthy, not only PowerPoint presentation that was given at a board workshop on February 14th, but also the video of that board workshop and then a link to our policies, specifically the 5120.02, which were, which is our guiding policy. So this will be continued where all the information will be as we go through this process. So eventually when we have three rezoning maps and any other information, this is where the community will, will be able to find an easy access to this information. So the way we made sure that the community knew about these public meetings that we just held over the last two weeks, we sent out an all parent email, we sent out an employee email, we sent out to all our key community leaders, you know, such as the head of the Chamber of Commerce and Business Alliance and groups like that. Constant and continuous social media posts, obviously our district website, we sent out a media release. I would say almost every TV station in the Tampa Bay area covered it and ran news stories on it. Our, one little interesting fact there, I find it interesting is 140 people watched that five, six hour YouTube board workshop in its entirety. So we give an award to those 140 individuals who watched that. So again, that's on there as if people want to watch that on an airplane ride for their spring break or something. But that's, all that information is on there. And what I've said at every public meeting is we're not hiding or running away from this issue. We are transparent. We are out front. We will always be communicating, maybe even over communicating on this rezoning issue because we know how important it is to, to our community. Just some attendance data, as you can see from our five meetings. Many of you were there at some of these meetings and some very engaged parents and community members asked some very good questions and really even stayed after and asked some questions. We've kind of summarized those questions here. You can see, these were kind of some common questions asked by parents in the community. Very, very good thoughtful questions. Some have answers now and some have answers that we can answer when we, when we get the maps created and, and that's the second part of the process. And, and I think parents understood that. They, they, they understood that, you know, we won't know where their particular home and street and all that is until we can work at these out on the rezoning maps. If you remember, we have a link on our website, also on a QR code at, at the agendas that we handed out these public meetings to our Let's Talk app, which is a great and easy way to provide public input during this process. We had 36 community members put in essentially an input or comment or a question. And all of those have been answered and they were answered within one day. And, and we'll continue that process to make sure that we're communicating as promptly as we can with as, as much information as we can as we get, as we go through this process. So now we're, we now move to, so that again completes that part two of, of that rezoning process, right? Is, or that policy that we're following is the superintendent coming to you, you approving, starting the process. We go out to the public to explain the timeline, the process and how this is going to work. And so now we're in this part three of the, of this particular policy, which is this yellow section, which is now the beginning of, of building these three rezoning map options. And again, in doing that, we, we are going to follow policy and, and this policy lays out how we do that in those numbers, one through nine. And we will use those as our guiding principles to, and that's principles with an L E S, not an A L S. But as we build the three maps, again, more of that section three of the policy that lays out again, what this next phase is. And that's the phase we're in. And I believe now I'm going to give it back to Dr. Weisong here to now lead the discussion as we now are in this now, all right, section three of this policy, which now building the maps. So essentially we, we're looking for guidance from you all as we now put on our little green hats and, and build these, and build these maps. Are there any questions though with, as we close out that section two and the public meetings and that data before we move into this discussion?
I just, real quick before going to the spread, I just want to say thank you for, and the staff for those five meetings. I know it's extra overtime, et cetera. But, you know, thank you for, for you and everybody else. I, I think I saw several staff in those pictures. So really appreciate, you know, going out to those schools and informing the public as best as possible. So really appreciate that.
It's a, it's a good point, Chair. We had, you know, we, we made sure that many of our senior leaders were there at every meeting, right? We had our Director of Enrollment Management, we had our Director of Communications, our Strategic Initiative Leader, our, many of our executive directors who supervise principals, our Chief Technology Officer, Mr. Rinaldi, Mr. Golf, many on that operational side. So all the kind of senior leadership of the district was there at every meeting to make sure that all answers and, well, all questions were, were answered. So a good, good point, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Yep. Ms. Bray.
Okay, on slide number nine. There's like one number, the fourth bullet. What it, and I was there when this gentleman, I believe I know who else, is quite the projected growth slows down or does not come. I just want to assure anyone that thinks that that's going to happen in Manatee County, it's not. No, in fact, and I'm going to use the example of Parish Community when we built that. We put the pad to add more capacity. And even with that, we're real close to capacity. And I didn't know if you were going to show the charts on the website that you had during the public meetings. I, I'm sure they're going to be on there. Am I right?
I, I have them and I could bring them up if, if you'd like.
No, I don't need to see them. I just didn't know if they're going to be on the website for people to look at.
Yes, they are. They are. So when you go to the website and you, and you follow that rezoning process link, it brings you to a section where you can click on that 60 some odd page presentation and look at all of that data and maps.
And then one of the questions was, would it be better to rezone schools annually? That would be a nightmare. So I, to the individual that asked that, this is a very long, drawn out process. It affects families all through the district. This is the first time in I don't know how many years we've done a district wide rezoning. The last time it was just a certain portion, Mr. Kennedy was here during that process. I don't, Mr. Chad, I don't know if you were here or not. But that was, that was a long process for even just that part when we had, I think it was when we did do Parish. Yes, when we built Parish. So annually would be totally out of the scope of what the district could do. And then the last bullet point on that slide was why only three plan options? I would say that the district is going to go through potential possibilities. They're not going to just do three. They're going to narrow down options to three to present to us as a board. I don't want more than three options to choose from in my, in my mind. I want the best option for the district and the students and the families that are going to be impacted. So I wanted to address those, at least those three bullet, bullet points. And, and I know that, you know, and the other one, will more schools be open to choice after rezoning? We don't know how that's going to operate. I don't as a district, as a board member, how the choice is going to be. But those were just some of the three that stuck out to me on the question responses and I wanted to at least address those. So if you have any feedback?
Yeah, Ms. Bray, on, on one of the items, the first one regarding capacity. And Mr. Chapman was fairly specific during the presentation that that 8,253 additional students are traditional K-12 students. So we worked with our consultant while we were developing the student generation rate to make sure that the percentage of charter school students was not in that number as well. And I think we just heard that interpretation again, but it's important to know that when we did the student generation, we, we focused on traditional K-12 students as well in regards to capacity.
Thanks for saying that, yeah.
Right, well, and, and to just add to Mr. Rinaldi's note, the latest data from the Department of Education shows that we did gain students this year, we public schools. The districts, the district operated schools added several hundred students beyond projection. The charter schools grew but did not meet their collective projection of their enrollment, but they did grow. The state's projection for vouchers actually came up a little bit short. So vouchers grew in Manatee County, but again, short of the projection. Our, our district operated school enrollment exceeded the projection. So we're, we're seeing continued interest in district operated schools. And so to your point, Vice Chair, even if growth stopped, we have schools that need relief now.
Right.
And relief sometimes comes through new construction. At other times, relief comes through rebalancing. And that's really what rezoning is. It's an exercise in rebalancing. And it's not, I appreciate your use of the word nightmare to describe doing this process annually. We, again, we, we as a leadership team, we don't want to do this process now. It's the last thing we want to, or the second to last thing, last thing we want to do. But we have to, and it's the right thing to do. And so that's, that's why we, we move forward. But I appreciate you clarifying that. I think what we will do is we will take some of those questions and we'll actually answer them in a frequently asked questions document.
Perfect.
However, some of them go back to that slide on February 14th of known unknowns. We know it's an issue, but we don't know the answer yet, as Mr. Chapman said. Once we have three map options, right, then we'll probably have more clarity on the answer to some of those questions. But the ones that there are clear answers to now, we'll add that to the website. And of course, I, I did get a note that the slider that was on the website came down Wednesday night after the last rezoning meeting. But there is another one scheduled to go up later today. They're just redeveloping it now that the last five meetings are over. So.
Okay.
So it'll be up there.
And I attended two and, and they were very well done. I want to say that. And some community members was at the first one, very few at the second that I attended. But you still took the time. It didn't matter if it was one or two people. You still went through the process of going through your slide and your presentation. And it was, I'll say, very well received that you took the time to do that. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Felton.
I was at the Parish Community presentation and I just, and again, thank you to all the staff that came out. We had about 40, I did a head count. We had about 40 people there. And they were all, they are all engaged and, and you were very entertaining. And you kept everybody engaged and kept the thing moving and it was very well done. And I want to thank you for taking the time to do that at all of our schools.
It could have been nap time, Mrs. Felton, but you tried to keep it somewhat lively.
You did. You did great.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, thanks, Chad. I, on the, on the sample questions from the public, I appreciate this bullet list. Ms. Bray, she already hit one that I had circled. There's three that I circled for further interest and that's what if projected growth slows down? Because that is one of the, this is probably, that's probably the biggest X factor that we're dealing with. And then the eighth, the eighth bullet about rezoning for demographics, that came up last time around. Totally different board, may look at that differently, but, and then, and I already asked this question and the superintendent has addressed it. The second to last about students being grandfathered in. And so, you know, I would like us to kind of keep that in mind. I understand where the superintendent's coming from. We, we're going to follow the policy. There may be a, there may be a time where a child has to go third grade in one school and then fourth in the next. I think we want to be careful with that, but be sensitive to it, I should say. But I did want to kind of circle back to that. We don't have to do it now. But my, the question I have at this point, and I want to jump to kind of the end of the process, is, you know, we've had this opening for public feedback or information and feedback now. But obviously the real feedback's going to hit when parents get a letter in the mail saying your child's changing schools. And so roughly in the timeline of this process, when will that parent notification begin? And what's the plan for dealing with that influx? I guess I'll use a safe, an influx of feedback we're going to get at that point.
So again, the, the timeline we're, we're hoping will play out is board approval of any changes by September. So that then the notification, and remember, everything is for '26, '27. That notification can happen fairly quickly along with here's all your other school choice options, including controlled open enrollment. The appeal process, right, all of those pieces so that that plays out in the normal course of time as well. And, and so there'll be, you know, those opportunities. Mr. Jamarra Clark continues to expand our Office of Student Assignment in terms of locations, right? We're well up and running in Lakewood Ranch in addition to the traditional office in Palmetto. We may do some further adjustments there into the summer. And the, again, the, I can't stress enough the Let's Talk system and how helpful that's been. Because in a, you know, in a traditional email format, you're emailing one person who might be out of the office that week, right? And then you're getting an away message or you're calling and you're getting voicemail. You know, with, with Let's Talk, we're, we're triaging parent questions very quickly. It's not just going to one person. You can have multiple people, you know, kind of triaging requests for information. So likely Mr. Kennedy, once, you know, once we're, you know, fully implemented, we would scale up a support team of people who work beyond the Office of Student Assignment to handle kind of the initial, you know, parent questions.
So about October roughly, you think?
Yeah, I think, I, I think, again, if, if, if we can keep this on track for final board approval by end of September, then October will be very busy. We can, we can even go into November, then you kind of hit the holidays, you come back and you hit your school choice window in January. So I think there's plenty of time, you know, for those conversations. Keeping in mind that all of our plans are also contingent on construction staying on track, right? And so we've got to get Ry Ranch Elementary built. We've got to get the elementary in Artisan Lakes built. And so no pressure, Mr. Clark, Mr. Willie Clark and Mr. Golf, they, they know what they have to get done. So there's a lot of moving parts to this, but I think that's to your point. You know, that, that after the decision, feedback and concern will scale up to be ready for that.
Okay, great. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
All good. Mr. Chair.
So, excuse me, by the way, yeah, great job on the presentation. So is there a way for people to, for parents and even students to see what school they might be going to based on the plans that are out there that will eventually come to us? I mean, how, how can families do that?
So once the, once we generate the three options, right, you'll be able to go and look at each map, right? You can kind of find about where you live and, and see, and then again, if there's a, gosh, we can't. we can't exactly tell, again, we'll have that, we'll have that Let's Talk application where people can send us their questions. And if it's very individualized, we can look up that student and write back and say, this is what, map A, this is map B, this is map C. Once everything's done and fully approved, of course, then we'll update all of our software packages. And then when you go in and look in the registration system, you'll see a new school zone.
And maybe you were going to talk about that, but can we get that? Like, when the three plans are ready, messages will go out to parents and stuff and say, hey, go take a look.
Right. And again, we're going to run, so we'll do, right, we'll do the same notification, communication channels that we did for the initial public meetings. And then, so social media, email messages, all of that. And then the, and then the promotion of, again, we, at this point, we anticipate doing the five public meetings, again, likely even in the same locations, so that people can come and look at those maps and either provide feedback in the same way, right on the note cards at the meeting or through the website and the Let's Talk feature.
Okay, great. That's all I have, thank you.
Ms. Kennedy, you were...
Sorry, I forgot to take it off, I'm sorry.
Ms. Ray?
I did mention, and I think during the workshop on the program, that we would be able to see that program. Are we still working on getting that in place for the board to see the system and how it works and the demographics of the streets, the rivers, the streams, and all of that?
Yeah, we'll absolutely, we'll absolutely schedule that time. It's on our follow-up list.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I can add one more point to Mr. Tatum's, great question, is that once those three rezoning maps get released, right? It's not like, you know, you've got 24 hours to respond, right? So I just want to make sure anybody listening, I mean, we're talking about getting that public input for that month of May, that month of June, that month of July, maybe even part of August. So at least three months, if not more, of gathering public input, having that back and forth of questions and answers and taking, you know, all those particular questions. So I just want to reassure families out there, this is not a, you know, we've got to take the day off to go battle the school district. This is a, we're going to make sure we have plenty of time, plenty of transparency, plenty of public input as we go through this, and that will happen throughout the summer.
Great, thank you. I only ask great questions, by the way. Thanks for reminding everyone.
Yeah, yeah.
And very modest.
But before we move on, a couple of you referenced the staff who were there. I do want to let you know, every, every member of my cabinet attended at least one of the five meetings, and will do so again. This really is all hands on deck. And so the same people who are prepping next year's budget and working on, you know, staffing and allocations and, you know, teacher recruitment, it's all the same people doing the work. And so it's, you know, it's going to be, I mean, every, every school year this time of year is busy. It's just going to be busier. And so, you know, as the chairman and I had an opportunity to talk this morning before the meeting, it, you know, it is, this, this has got to be a high priority to hit these timelines. And so there may be other good ideas or great ideas that come up over the next couple of months that we say, that sounds great, can we please talk about that next fall? Because there just isn't time right now. Because we, we've got, we've also got to get the K-8, Lake Manatee K-8 open in August and the Harvey North River Ranch campus open. So there's just a lot of competing priorities right now. And we've got a great team, so we'll get through it. But there's not a lot of bandwidth left for new stuff. So appreciate you all and your understanding with that.
All good?
So, thank you. So again, so we're, that kind of concludes part two of that policy. And now we've, we move into phase three, which is, which is now building these maps. So again, we're guiding, policy is guiding us through that. And so what we're hoping for today from you all is, is a conversation, a discussion about what you all, some ideas you may have or considerations, so that, you know, obviously, we could start, when we start building these maps, we're taking into account, you know, board feedback on that.
So board members, one of the topics that you all raised last month in the February workshop was conversations about schools that are very under capacity. And when you have kind of multiple schools in an area that are under capacity, obviously, our, our goal is to balance capacity when you rezone. But that seemed to be a topic of interest back on February 14th. So we just wanted to see if there were any board members who wanted, you know, more discussion or to talk about anything specific on schools under capacity.
Ms. Felton?
I am categorically opposed to closing schools. And I'm going to tell you why. I was teaching at Harley Middle School when it was closed. I was there for the last three years. It was, it was a middle school. And it was devastating to our families, to our students, and to that whole area. Because kids who could walk to school are now being bused all over the county because our school was no longer there. And we had, we had had sixth, seventh, and eighth, and it was small. It was a small school. I was the only seventh-grade English teacher, right? To let you know how, how small that was, I was the only one. And then our, our last year, we just had seventh and eighth, which meant then now our seventh graders now had to go finish their last year of middle school at a completely foreign school. And so that was my kids, my students, who now were going from Harley seventh grade to some other school. They were all getting broken up, taken away from their friends. Their families now had to figure out how to get them places. It made, was going to make it harder for them to participate in after-school events and all of those activities. We had sports, we had football, we had girls' sports too. And, and not being able to walk to school when so many of them did not have transportation took away from their ability to participate in those things. That was a neighborhood school. I had students who, I had a student who was honored at the Martin Luther King banquet for her speech. I was her transportation, her parents did not own a car. So they signed a waiver that I could take her to that so that she could do her speech and get her award. If we take the schools out of the neighborhoods because they're small, it hurts our kids. And I cannot support anything that hurts our kids.
Thank you.
So this is kind of like a broad topic. So I'll start just with some ideas that I have for like, I'll work like elementary and up. Then I see Mr. Tatum as well and Ms. Ray. So let's start elementary school, the ones that are under capacity. I think that you've obviously got a cluster, and this is, this is all specifically like West Bradenton, right? I mean, where most of these undercapacities are. And I think that you can, with some of the elementaries that are full, as we redraw these lines, I think we can, we can move some of these lines to be able to take an overcrowded school like Moody, like Rogers, potentially Baytown, I'm just naming those three that, that are on the, you know, west of 75. And, and of course, it's going to be, when you all make the maps, it's going to be how far is too far away from the schools? I mean, all that kind of stuff plays in. But I think we can definitely move around some, some students to be able to get rid of some of the overcapacity at some of those elementary schools and help, obviously, with the undercapacity of some of the other schools. So that, you know, obviously, I think that's the point of all this exercise is you all rezoning and doing that anyways. I do think also with elementary school, when you look at some of these elementary schools, especially on the west side.
Yeah.
And today's just going to be a day of honesty. How about that? Is that good?
Yeah.
And I'm an absolute proponent of school choice. I believe, though, that, and this may not, analogy's not going to work because it's probably not kosher, but I believe we're going into a fight with, and that's a negative connotation, but we're going into a fight without the right tools. And here's what I mean by that. We've got charter schools that are taking, that population in the west side is there, these elementary schools, they're just not in our seats. They're in, they have choice to another school. And we have phenomenal elementary schools. I mean, Stewart Elementary is the top-performing elementary school in the district. But does anyone know that outside of that area, right? Like, does anyone know that that's happening? That, that they are the best, the top performing? So that to me is, I look at all of our undercapacity issues as, are we letting our own community know how good our schools are? Because there are people who are driving from the island, from northwest Bradenton, from Cortez, whatever, all the way to Rowlett Elementary, which is next to southeast. So, so they're going a long way to choose a school that is great. Rowlett's great, no, I'm not taking anything from Rowlett. When there are schools that are just as good or better in proficiency, et cetera, that are right there next to them. So, right, so that's, that's something that, and that's not the rezoning that's going to happen, right? Like, this is going to be a, a marketing and that sort of thing with, with kind of fixing that, you know, and getting, getting the good things that we do out there. We've done a very good job since I've been on the board. That was one of the very first things I said was, we've got to have a better, like, social media presence, et cetera. And Mr. Barber and his group have done phenomenal. I mean, there's stuff posted all the time, the good news stuff and all that. But I just don't know if, if we have the same mentality, this isn't just anyone, the reminding is just school districts probably in general, of the, and I know recruiting's going to have a negative connotation, so, but that's okay, recruiting and marketing our schools to other kids around us that are choosing something else, right? I mean, it just is what it is. If seats aren't, if there's no cheeks in the seats, it is what it is, right? Finance, I know you guys just came from finance, they say that a lot, right? Cheeks and seats. So I think that, that of course, I think with the rezoning, we can tweak some things, you know, around Moody, you know, et cetera, you know, to maybe help go to Seabreeze or go to Palmisola, whatever, to be able to increase some of that capacity. But I think we've got, and I know it's coming, and, but there's just thoughts that are out there. Like, we've got to do a better job of showing the public how good we truly are and how good our schools really, really are. Because I think that's key, I think that's key. I'm going to, I'm going to stop at elementary school just because I've got some other stuff. I know other board members do as well. So I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that for elementary. And then I'll talk about my other stuff later on.
Ms. Tatum?
I would just like to make the point that I obviously agree with Ms. Felton, no one wants to hurt children, right? But at some point, when you start looking at the money, I mean, the capital budget appears to me to being stretched to some degree, right? I mean, we're borrowing all the money that we have to do. And then we're going to have in April that discussion about taxes and if charter schools are going to get more money or not. And so, you know, a couple million dollars here and a couple million dollars there matters in the capital budget. And so I'm not in favor of necessarily closing schools. I mean, who wants to do that? And I'm not in favor of necessarily doing it now, but after we do this rezoning, and if we watch for a year or two, and, and some of our schools are just consistently at, you know, 55, 50, 45, 60%, I just think it's, as a responsible steward of the taxpayers' money that at some point you have to go, well, look, we tweaked this, we tried to, we tried to make it work, but, you know, the capital budget is being stretched. And to be fiscally responsible, we have to consider it. I'm not saying do it now, but at some point, you know, when you look at these numbers, if we can't get people to move and change and do whatever, then, you know, we just can't keep schools open when our capital budget, capital budget is being stretched. And like I said, if whatever decision we make about the charter schools and their tax money, it's going to be significant. So that's all I had to say, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ray?
Okay, talking about capacity. I'm looking, by the way, the link to look at everything for the public is on our website. Thank you for...
It's back up?
It's there, right.
There it is.
It's quick.
It was very quick. So thanks to IT for that. I'm looking at the chart for the elementaries, that's where I'm going right now. And no one wants to close a school, however. It's not just about the capital expense, it's about the general fund maintenance expense as well. And, and staffing and all of that has to come into play. I'm looking at schools that are 56% capacity, 63, 54. I mean, there's a lot of, we have several schools, this is only elementary, several schools out there. And I know Johnson is 63, and that's 100% choice school. Am I correct in that? That is 100, okay. And it's only at 63%. And we just redid that school when they went through the closings, when I think Mr. Kennedy, you were here, when they redid that whole site and build, added on to it, Johnson.
When it's converted to a K-8.
Right, when it's converted, yeah. So, and we closed the school, am I correct, when we did that, Wakeland? Was that when Wakeland was closed?
Oh, boy.
I'm going back a ways.
Honestly, off the top of my head, I don't remember because Harley closing, I think it was first, and I'll address that when I get a chance to speak. But it was all right around the same time.
Right.
All these pieces were interrelated, yeah.
Right, and then you look at Palmisola, 50%. Palmetto Elementary, 54%. So it's not just about the capital expense, it's after the expense, the staff, the custodian, the cafeteria workers, the transportation. All of that has to factor into this as well. So I'm not going to, you know, maybe I'm the devil's advocate here, but whatever we have to do to maintain our expenses at a reasonable cost, because this is taxpayer dollars, this isn't just the district's money to just go out there and spend. Closing a school might be the business sense that you have to do. Who would that be? I don't, I don't know. We've got to do the numbers and all of that. But we can't continue to operate schools at a 50% level. That's just not financially sound, in my opinion. That's just me. When you, especially when you have schools that are so close together and you have capacitated all three of them. But again, you've got some that are way over capacity, 140% at Gullit. That's just, that's crazy, and that's a good example. And Harvey, 157%. Perfect example of why we have to do this rezoning. And it's going to make some people uncomfortable with some of our choices, but that's why we're here. That's why we want your feedback. And understand, we can't accommodate everybody's wishes. That's, that's just business sense, you know? And in this business, it, it affects families and students and, and people who work and drop off their students as well. So it's going to be hard to balance everybody's wants. But there's, there's a difference in want and need. And need is, we have, we need to redistrict, rezone these schools. Do we want to keep every school open? That may not be a good business sense. It just isn't, in my opinion. So you've got to balance the needs and the wants, the costs, and, and everything else and all of that. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Ms. Kennedy?
Thanks. Yeah, Heather, I wanted to address your, your comment about Harley, and I apologize retroactively for closing your school. I was, I was a vote to do that, and it's one of the ones I regret, and I really came to regret it after I began working at Daughtry. And I saw those kids when they went from... And I saw those kids when they went from fifth to sixth grade, as you mentioned, they, they now have to get on a bus to go to Lee or SUG, mostly SUG, many of them. Um, but I have talked with the superintendent, the superintendent has mentioned it, you know, possibly we could repurpose Harley with future needs, so I appreciate that flexibility to, to take a second look at Harley. And how can we keep those Daughtry kids in that neighborhood, so like you said, they can walk to school? Um, the other thing too, I'm totally switching gears here, but about closing schools, and if you do not like what I'm about to say, please direct your ire at me and only me. Um, but I think we do need to take a look at Anna Maria Elementary. Because it's, it's very much under capacity. It's, they're not even, not even at two hundred students. All the capacity is two ninety-one. Um, and I, I'm painting with a broad brush, cuz I don't really know where all the kids are coming into Anna Maria Elementary from. I'm sure some are coming from West Bradenton, some live on the island. But, um, for me, I think we need to keep an open mind about it, because to Mrs. Sprague's point, it's just a, it's a financial decision about operating schools this far under capacity. So, um, I know that would be I know you all had experience in northwest Bradenton previously, um, with the talk of, um, of closing a school and, and what that led to, and everybody landed on their feet and everything's fine. But, um, but I do at least want to, I think we, if we're, if today is honesty day, I need to be honest and share this, that Anna Maria Elementary is under capacity has been on my mind. And it could, you know, kids that are in the south part of the, of Anna Maria, they could go right down Cortez Road to Seabreeze. Kids that are, um, on the north part of Anna Maria Island, they could go right out to Stewart or Palmasola, um, relatively close by. I know I'm opening a can of worms with folks on the island and
I, I think this is part of the process.
And, right, I do too, and that's why I'm, I'm happy to
I mean, you guys may, we, we all may decide, no, we're not doing that, but I think this is part of the process.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and I, and I
You gotta be open mind.
I hope everybody doesn't like freak out, right? I know that, I know what's gonna happen. I know the community is gonna freak out. But this is all just discussion, right? Like, there's, there's no voting items, there's nothing here. We're just talking now. I'll say, just to jump into what you said on Anna Maria, um, and then I wanna ask an opinion about the rest, how the rest of the meeting goes. Um, you know, I've had thought, I've, I've talked about this with the superintendent and, uh, Mr. Jensen, we've talked about this in our briefings, things like that. That, um, you know, at a time, obviously, yeah, there was hundreds of kids in, in Anna Maria. Um, obviously, the, the residents there just aren't there. Uh, but I do believe, um, if we can be innovative and creative with our buildings that we have, and I think we can do this in several places, and I'll talk about that as we go, but Anna Maria is one of them. If we obviously have a Guy Harvey program that the state was willing to give a million dollars to fund, um, maybe more. Um, you know, we are, we are just at the cusp of really having that thing cruise and, and, and really go. Uh, we obviously, as the feeder to King and then to Manatee, um, we were awarded as the best district for the Guy Harvey just three months ago, right? Four months ago, something like that. So I think that we could potentially use that spot as, and again, this is being creative, marketing, et cetera. We know we, we, there's, there's missing students in there. There's obviously open capacity. So, you know, one of the ideas I had that, that I've shared with, with Dr. Weisong, and I think this is absolutely doable, is, um, how do we market to the homeschool kids, even to the charter schools, to say, can we offer you X amount of hour a day per week, whatever, to come out and you're gonna do your science, et cetera, in our Guy Harvey room, right? And then that funding is just whatever the, the amount of time that they use is the funding is shared between the schools, right? Um, so I think, I think we are creative and, and have some programs like that. I think you could get away with still having these undercapacity schools open. Now, I don't necessarily disagree with Mr. Tatum, though. We try it, we do it. How many years are you, are you gonna do it until it doesn't work? Um, so um, but I think that there's still some creative ways that we can get especially Anna Maria with, with the Guy Harvey project. Um, I think there's ways we can get revenue, I hate to talk like we're in a business, but to get revenue in to replace what we're losing in not having kids there, right? Um, and, you know, I think we're, as far as choice goes with Anna Maria, I think we're as, as, I mean, that, you know, you can't bus every, you know, that's, that's a, that, that bus drive is obviously, you know, not great. But I think there could be ways you could do that, cuz I agree with Guy. I think Anna Maria is obviously one that you look at.
We gotta, we gotta do something, yeah.
Agree. Um.
Check, can I throw one more thing in on this point? Um, I brought this idea up over the summer, um, before I was back, and it was met with mixed reactions. But as long as we're talking about Anna Maria, I'd like to just bring this up one more time, is what if we had a uh, you know, the county operates their boat service between downtown and the island. But what if we had an option, and it may not be possible, and I'm sure the attorneys are gonna hear this, be like, oh my God, the liability, but what if we had?
You said boat, sorry.
We, we partner with the county, the parents, you could drop your kid downtown, uh, on school days, and the boat will take them out to Anna Maria so they can go to school. Mr. Penley is already
We haven't started creating enough insurance for that.
Attorney Petrop is good with it.
That is an awesome idea. I don't think it's doable, but I think it's awesome.
Yeah.
Um, you know, there's not that many
Captain Kennedy, maybe.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna get anywhere near that boat, but
If you suggest putting a tiki bar on it, we have another problem.
That's, that's, that's for staff. That's for staff after hours.
After hours. Um, yeah, so, so, yeah, go ahead.
I, I was actually wondering about for Anna Maria, um, MTC is, their, their marine people keep talking about wanting a dock. And to be near the water, and if there was any way we could utilize any property there that might be able to, um, work with MTC to give them access. And I know it's land, you know, it's in the middle of the island, it's not on the water, but
No, it's on the water.
Well, I mean, it's not like
Eighteen inches of that.
But, yeah. But, um, but in some way that they could maybe have access to that property to to bring that in, you know?
Great idea.
Well, one of the issues is, we're, we're working on the Guy Harvey dock project as well, and we have very, very, very skinny water in proximity to the AME campus.
It's like, not like a big waterfront.
Yeah, I mean, cuz we're, um, the original thought was maybe bringing a pontoon or having a boat, or, I mean, we're we're at kayak depth at high tide right now, and with exposed seagrass during low tide. So, I mean, it, it uh, we're, we're looking at options on how to do that dock presently, and what, uh, programs we can offer there as well, but, uh, uh, bringing a large vessel in or even a small vessel has turned out to be
I mean, even if they were just like, had classes there and then transported to a
To the
Uh, an auxiliary location for actual water work.
Yeah, that, that would have to be the, the way the program.
So that's what I was, that was, that was just a thought. I just wanted to throw that out there. Since Dr. Gansmore's in the audience.
Yeah. Um. Dr. Weisong, in, in board, I just, um, want to just kinda see what, what, what do we ob- obviously, you look at a board discussion topics, the school's under capacity, the next one, next slide's under capacity, the eighth high school. Then we talk about the high school, it looks like, and the last slide is the same thing, and then any additional consideration before we begin remapping. Do you, where do you want us to go? I mean, do you, are you wanting us to release every thought we possibly have here, or do you wanna keep it, like I kinda said, was like elementary to middle, I mean, what do you, what do you want to see?
We're, again, we're, we're, we're listening for guidance that might help us to, um, get the macro structure of these maps correct. So, for example, if all of you today were saying, yes, let's resolve undercapacity through closure or consolidation, we have to know that, right? So that we can start. If that's not what you wanna do, then we know that we're drawing the current number of residential attendance zones we have now, plus the new schools, right? So, this, this discussion's helpful, you know, just to, just to hear the things you're interested in or not interested in. Um, and, and again, if there are others, so, you know, Mr. Kennedy, for example, threw out, what about reopening Harley? If that's something that, you know, that the board is interested in, then we can run a scenario where that happens. And incorporate that into one map option. And then if down the road, you decide, yeah, we definitely wanna do that, then we've kind of segmented that out, and if you decide, no, we don't wanna do that, then we just pull that piece out of that map option. Um, but I also don't wanna spend, um, hours and hours as a staff in a conference room, working on a design that the board really isn't interested in. So, just the conversation so far is helpful. Um, and again, we don't, we, we, we're not asking, we don't vote in workshops anyway, but we're not looking for all of that. So far, I haven't heard consensus on anything that's a major difference, but if consensus emerges on something, then that tells us to incorporate it into one of the options. So the discussion's very helpful.
Okay, great.
Okay, I'm looking at the diagrams, um, chart six twenty-seven. And my concern is the block at southeast that are being bussed out to Lakewood Ranch.
Oh, the high school boundary?
Yeah, the high school, the high school boundary. Um, that's that's a, a big one for the community. And, um, and if you look at the capacity on that particular school, southeast is under, while Lakewood Ranch obviously is over. So, I know that was carved out back in, when Lakewood Ranch was built. So I would say look at that when you're, take that under consideration, because I've already been approached about that.
Yeah. I would agree with that. Um, I think that
Yeah.
Um, you know, especially, I was approached by after-school activities. We don't obviously provide busing for after-school stuff. And, you know, it, it, parents work, don't work twenty, thirty minutes out there. It, how do you go get your kit, you know, and they're gonna be sitting in the school? So I agree. I think that that's something that's gotta be moved.
Yeah.
Um.
That's a forty Forty-five minute ride, by the way.
Southeast, you know, Break River, whatever, it's all kinda right there. Um, so, yeah, good point. I was gonna, I was going to mention that
I just wanna make sure that that's
We, we have that on our list, um, to run that kind of impact analysis on, right? So if you pick up that um, that block and you move it where it's continuous, what, how does that shift numbers? So, yes, that's on our list of things to study. Um, and, uh, take a look at.
Who knows how many students are in that block, you know, who knows?
Yeah. Right. Well, that, like I said, that's one of my district schools, and that's the biggest concern that people brought to my attention when I visit that school, and, and that, yeah, that's a big thing.
I would agree with that, having been there for so long.
Yeah.
Um, something that, and, and I don't know if, if, and Mr. Kennedy, you mentioned this Tuesday, and I don't know if this is the right venue, but I'm just gonna kinda go on my list.
Sure.
Um. The, uh, I've got several emails, I don't know if everybody has, I don't know if they're attached to everybody or not, I don't remember. Um, but teachers and their own students, where the, you know, when they teach at a school, and their own, own students getting into, to a school. Um, I think we have to keep that in, into, to our, um, our thought process here. Um, I'll, I'll give you my own personal examples. Um, when my wife and I were both teaching and coaching in the district, um, there's no way we could have coached, and she coached as well, cheerleading, there's no way we could have done those things. We didn't have the capability of having our, well, they went with her, um, cuz I taught high school. Um, and so, so there's no way that when she was at, you know, Nolan or where, or Miller, if they, if we weren't able to do that, um, we wouldn't, someone would've had to stay home, right? Someone would have to go get kids, or, or they're gonna have to go to after-school program, et cetera. Um, and so it was much easier on us that we were able to choose to, to have our child where we teach.
Yeah.
Um, I know we're gonna probably get some, some, the opposite of that is, well, then who's out, right? Like, obviously, if, if twenty teachers in a school have you know, twenty-one kids, twenty-three kids, whatever, between them all, whatever, and they're all choicing, that's seats, right, for somebody else. Um, and I'll, I'll be honest, I think that our teachers are taxpayers, just like everybody else. Uh, and I think that, um, it's just a perk of the job, to be quite honest with you. Um, it, it's something that, that they should have, um, just is, in my personal opinion, it just, that, that should be something we should be accommodating as much as possible. It's hard for us to hire teach, I mean, it's, it's tough right now in general, and if, and if a teacher's gotta drop a kid off at this school and, and, and then go X amount of minutes somewhere else to get to their teaching, their actual teaching tool, you know, I just, um, I think that's something we can accommodate. So just, I would, I would add that in, in this. I mean, me personally, I guess, I don't know if we're having consensus here on that. I mean, I don't, I don't want you all to say, cuz I'm saying one thing to say, oh, we'll look into this, and then nobody else cares. So I just, I know we're not voting, but I wanna make sure if that's a thought as we go. Um.
And it is.
I just, well, Mr. Tatum's up first. Is that what you wanna talk about, is that?
Well, there was, yeah, I would, well, first of all, what is the current policy? Is it, is it too complicated to explain to us?
Well, it's, yes, generally speak, first of all, of course, I wanna retain all of our teachers, right? Cuz they, you, um, and, and to Mr. Choate's point, there are very few perks, right? Uh, and, uh, when, when you're talking about, um, public education. Uh, there are, so generally, yes, employees' children are accommodated. Where it gets a little more complex is when you have an employee child who wants to attend a school that is overcapacity and therefore not necessarily available to all residents who live in that attendance area. Right? We have, we have two schools right now that if you are, if you are newly moving into that area, there's a reassignment to another school because there's no room. There's no seats. So if you hire a new teacher into that school, do you let their student come with them when you've told other residents who are moving into the zone, sorry, we don't have room? So that's an example. Um, and, and there are some others. VPK can be an issue sometimes. Um, because we don't, we don't have unlimited VPK. VPK's not, uh, required service like kindergarten or first grade is, right? So, um, so there are some, um, I guess you'd call them kind of edge cases. There's a couple of them pending right now, and again, if we can accommodate, we will. Um, I think it's hard to write policy around that unless the board is willing to say we feel so strongly about employee-child preference that we're okay telling residents, sorry, you can't go to this school, but potentially an out-of-county employee child is gonna get a seat. If the board wants to do that in policy, you can. Um. But I think that's the, that's the challenge. But again, generally speaking, we accommodate our employees.
I just had the thought that they could be, I understand what you're saying about the fairness issue, telling a local resident that your child can't go, cuz we hired Mrs. Jones to teach math. On the other hand, you could put that child at the top of the choice list, you know, and just give them a priority, like, on, on the waiting list is what I meant, I guess, and make them the number one. Say, look, our employees go to the top of the waiting list, and then, that's a thought. Uh, and then the other question I had was, I wasn't maybe aware of what Ms. Sprague had brought up. I was looking at, I'm looking at the chart about capacity chart, high school existing. So there actually, and there is a red square, there's, they're actually children or students bused from that red square over to Lakewood Ranch. Is that, is that what's going on?
Yes.
There must've been some reason back in the day why that was done.
And Mona Jane from middle school.
And Mona Jane.
Is that, was it a capacity issue, or does anybody?
It was a student, if I may.
Demographic, yeah. It was like student demographics.
To provide some diversity.
To Lakewood Ranch.
To the student body.
And that square is like roughly around like Wakeland, Pirate City area, if I, it's up top of my head.
Between Pirate City and Tropicana for
Right.
Thirteenth Avenue, above like three
Ninth to thirteenth
Right.
Citrus Meadows.
It was done in, when Lakewood Ranch High School was open.
Correct.
Right.
Talking like
Ninety
Ninety-eight.
Mid nineties, so
Right, nineties.
Okay, long time ago.
Yeah, I mean
Well, whatever the reason
I was a freshman.
Principal Scarborough could probably address this.
Well, whatever the reason was back then, I would not be in favor of it now, just carving out little squares like that. I mean, it should be contiguous unless there's just some really absolutely good, I can't think of a good reason. There might be one out there, but anyway, that's all I had. Thank you.
Ms. Felton?
Um, back to the, um
Teacher?
The teacher thing. Um, a lot of the emails we've been getting are from my district. And, and then I also hear about them when I'm at the schools and I'm, and, you know, so I, I've been getting a lot of, of communication about that as well. And, and, you know, just to kinda echo you, with there, there are few perks of being a teacher where you get something special that, you know, to enable you to be able to easier do your job. I, I choiced my own kids as well when I was teaching so that my youngest wasn't at Parish Community while I was at Southeast. Just made sense to have. All, all three of us were at one school for a year, it was awesome. And I know, and I do feel bad about the, the local community, but we've got, you, we've, we're getting there. We've got two new elementary schools that are, or two new schools that are coming, elementary schools that are coming up there that will help alleviate some of that. Some of those teachers that are up there may shift to those new schools, and that would take their kids with them as well. So, that would also relieve some of that pressure. So, I'm hoping that hopefully these, these pains will only be for about a year while we're waiting for those two new schools to open. That was my.
That's a great point, and, you know, another part of this balancing work when we go to move lines is, are there situations where you can, I mean, and, and this, I think, went to the vice chair's question earlier from the slide about, well, how many, will more schools be open to choice because of rezoning? The answer is possibly, right? It depends on kind of the final map. But that's another piece of the analysis that we'll be running as we look at all of our options is how, about how much capacity do we think will be at each location? Because you wanna have room for future growth. You also wanna have room for school choice, because we are in a competitive environment. And so, you know, in, in, in the example you gave, uh, Mrs. Felton, right now, if you live in the Parish area and you wanna go to Southeast, we can make that happen, right? If you live in the Southeast area and you wanna go to Parish, that's a very different story.
Yeah.
If, if in a perfect world, you can get it all balanced, then you can help people go wherever they want, which is what we would love to do. Unfortunately, the growth patterns in the community don't support that type of approach. But we'll keep, you know, that, that's the point of the map drawing exercise. And then, again, it may be that we will bring you multiple options, and you may look at one of them and go, "Wow, everything really looks in balance there." But then, when we show you the impact analysis, how many families are affected, you may say, "No, thank you," right? And that's, and that's why the policy says we should bring you three options.
Yep.
Right? Because we may bring you, we, we may bring you something that looks really good until you look at the impact, and then you may say, "Yeah, that's too much." And, and that's, that's how this works.
Ms. Bray?
Back to teachers and students, being at their schools. To your point, Dr. Weisong, if you have an out-of-county teacher, you know, wanting to bring their children to our district school, I think that's a little gray area there. I mean, we have teachers that live in Sarasota County, Pinellas County, I don't know, maybe DeSoto even, I don't know. But bringing their kids out of another district to our district, I don't know if that would be a responsible thing to do. But the other part to that is if a teacher is moved from one school to another, that needs to be considered as a business decision, and that child may not get to go with that, with their parent to the new school that they're assigned to. So, we have to look at all of those options. I just wanted to bring that up because that might come up. If a teacher is moved to a different school, I don't think they would want to take their student out of one school to another mid-year if something happened. I mean, we've had how many deaths in the past year, you know, and, and we've had to put another teacher in. So, are we hiring, moving, we don't know that. But sometimes, I just wanna make that a point, that if a teacher is moved from one school to another, their child may not get to move with them. So.
I was talking about opening new schools.
Right, I get that, yeah.
Yeah, those, those cases are, are rare. And, and just to clarify, under the controlled open enrollment state law, you, you can cross county lines, right? We, we have people in our schools now who live in, in Sarasota, in Hillsborough. Again, the issue with teachers and their own children really only comes into play when you're in an over-capacity or a closed situation or, or some other type. Again, there's some specific issues right now related to how you populate the sixth grade at, at the Harvey North River Ranch campus, and, and I can work with you all one-on-one on that because, again, we're, we're really in outlier issues at this point. Uh, and again, our goal is to accommodate, but to do it within a framework that treats people fairly.
Right.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yeah, real quick, and then we could probably wrap up this topic, but I appreciate the, um, right before Project Teach, the superintendent and I had a chance to talk one-on-one, and he did address this very situation at Harvey, what we're dealing with. That balance between recruitment and retention of staff, which being able to bring your child to school with you is a big benefit and fairness to the kids that are already, the families that are already in that district. I lean toward to answer your question, Superintendent Weisong. I lead toward, I feel strongly enough about it, I think for the sake of our staff, we could, we could make a policy that says, "Your child can come with you." But then, to Mrs. Bray's point, if that staff member then goes to another school, that would revoke that student's, that would revoke that student's choice, I think that'd be fair. So, I just wanna share my position on that. Um, and then I had a question on, Superintendent, you, you said we currently have students who are actually zoned for, I'll just use Harvey, for example. A student may be zoned for Harvey, but because there is no capacity, they're actually, they're actually going somewhere else?
Right, we have two, and Mr. Kennedy, this happened before you came on the board. We have, Gullett and Harvey, right now, are so over-capacity that they actually close to new enrollment in early August. And so, new families moving into that zone were reassigned to an adjacent school with capacity. We had no choice. If we had not done that, Gullett today would, would likely be at seventeen hundred or more.
So, you'd have thirty kids and a class size minimum twenty-two class.
Well, you reach, well, it's really a core facility, and Mr. Rinaldi's the expert on this, but, you know, you can always add portables, right, until you run out of green space, but your cafeteria is only so large. You, you, your media center's only so large. And so, you, you reach a point where a school is so over-capacity that you, you can't safely provide basic services. So, we actually added that provision, knowing that we were in hyper-growth and that there was no way to accelerate the opening of the new schools, right? You, you have to have a stopgap measure. And so, you know, right now, if you're a new family moving into the Gullett Zone, there's a, a reassignment to Freedom, right, which is right down the street. And then, at Harvey, the reassignment is to Mills. And all of that is in, is in policy. And obviously, that, you know, again, that's the last thing we want to do, but at some point, you reach a health and safety reality.
Totally understand.
Yeah.
Chad, one quick follow-up. And you just said something that piqued this question. So, if the family moves in after school has begun, they can be routed to Mills, for example? But then, once the next school year comes up, they would, we would have to find space for them?
Right, so the, so the policy as it currently exists says that when that happens, those, any family that has to be reassigned is given priority to re-enroll the next year at that zone school. Or, they can also choose to stay. And what's interesting is, and I don't, I don't have the exact data, but, but what my team tells me is that about half of families that were affected by that are actually choosing to stay at that school.
Yep.
Because Freedom and Mills are great schools, right? We've got lots of great schools. And once you make that connection to teachers and activities and, you know, that, for some families, it's attractive to stay, so that it, it becomes an option, right? And again, our goal is to never do that, we just, in this case, we had no choice.
And one last one, and kids in that situation, even though they're outside the, the two-mile radius, or, I'm, they might be, my question's about transportation, are we required to get them there if we're sending them to a school?
Yes, so if they were, so, again, the reassigned families received transportation. And, again, it's never perfect, right, 'cause you have to reroute and, and everything. So, Mr. Rinaldi, Mr. Clark, Mr. Warrington dealt with all of that. If you choose to stay beyond the one year, then it, it's really a choice transfer, and that comes without transportation.
Thank you. Clarifies a lot.
To you, to the, to the, to your reassigned school, if you choose to then, choice to a, a difference, so, so in that case, Harvey is to Mills, right? But if you, if you then decide to not go to Mills, and say you go to McNeil or another school, transportation is then not provided.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Right. I just wanna clarify, some parents may hear, you know, and I just, hey, I didn't get your...
So, that's a great point, and, and the specific example is when, when Gullett had to close to new enrollment, the reassignment was to Freedom, where we had capacity. But in working with individual families, right, some said, "Well, we're driving south, we drive right by McNeil, we had room at McNeil." And so, if a parent made the request, we did a reassignment there instead without transportation because that was what was, that's what the parent felt was best.
That's what they requested, yeah.
So, again, although a tough situation, we tried to do everything we could to accommodate and be flexible where it was possible.
Okay, I appreciate that. It's very interesting, so.
Awesome. So, I think we talked about the teacher privilege of having their kid there. You know, Ford, I don't know if this wants to be a policy or not. I, I personally would go to fight for our teachers if the public came out and said, "Oh, I can't go to that school, but the teacher's kid can." I would be okay with taking that burden on, and that would be on us. It's our policy, not the district's, right? So, it'd be us taking that heat, but we can, we can touch on that later. I wanna take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Does that need you? We'll come back and finish a little more, and then we'll do lunch around twelve-thirty.
Awesome.
Thanks.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right. So, moving forward with some more discussions and things like that. I'm gonna throw into a couple topics here. Well, let's, we've kind of talked about some elementary school. I, myself, said I kind of want to break it up, for me personally, my comments. So I do want to go to middle school real quick.
Okay.
You know, obviously with zones, and you look at the middle school, you know, Mona Jane's going to be fixed. Same topic, that square that goes out to Mona Jane, that would go to Lakewood Ranch, I would like to fix that. And then, you know, SUG. I mean, SUG looks like a bad Tetris game to me. And it just kind of goes around everywhere, right? And so, and it's obviously near capacity, right? And Lee's not, and so I think that would be my number-one spot to look to fix. I don't even think it matches, and I could be wrong on this, but like theaters, like if 75% of Miller Elementary goes to King or SUG, you know what I mean, like, we got to kind of fix, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know exactly on the map how it looks. But anyways, I think that that absolutely needs to be tweaked. And again, I don't know what the lines are where, that's what the program's for, and you guys will find that. But I think middle school, that's it, right? Like, I mean, other than that, the up in Parish, like, that's what we're doing, right? Like, you know. I don't see anyone lit up to there, but, yeah.
Yes, Chairman, we have Mona Jane, we have SUG, we have the kind of disconnected parcel or islands there, we've got that on the list as well. I would like to, just for the board, to talk a little bit about Mr. Kennedy's suggestion related to Harley, because obviously, that would be an additional attendance zone if there was interest in reopening. The other piece is there are several specialized programs there. Some may be able to stay, others might need to be relocated. We have a contracted site that's on that property. We'd have to get with DOE about whether they would consider that co-location of two schools and how that affects all of that. So it's an analysis we can run if there's interest.
I guess I'll answer first. If, I would say, the only way I'd be interested is if we felt like Lee can't absorb, to get SUG a little bit less than near capacity, to bring it down a little bit, if Lee can't. I don't know. I don't know why, I don't know what the need would be to open up Harley and then have Lee right with it, and both of them be half-capacity. I mean, you know what I mean? And I wasn't here either to decide it or a part of the school for the motion. It's been how many years now? Just out of curiosity?
About 10.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I don't necessarily have an appetite for it unless we can somehow say, this is how it's going to help, you know, get SUG a little bit, you know, down from a population standpoint, et cetera. Mr. Kennedy, were you lit up?
Yeah, I'm not, but I'll, I think most of the, this is just anecdotal from my experience. I'm pretty sure that most of the fifth graders who leave Daughtry, the vast majority of them go to SUG, not Lee. Somebody can double-check me on that, but I think if we were to do something with Harley to reopen it, and maybe we just reopen it with sixth graders coming up, whatever the case may be, staff can work on that. But I think if we were to do something at Harley, it would mostly relieve pressure on SUG. It wouldn't touch Lee nearly as much, but somebody can prove me right or wrong on that down the road.
Mr. Kennedy?
As far as Harley goes, I've been down there, I used to do my felt deliveries down there. It seems like to be a lot of disruption to move, unless there was a really good reason to do something at Harley. There's a lot of those special education programs that are going on down there. To move those other places and reopen Harley, it's been closed for 10 years, did we say?
Eight, eight, I was wrong, it's about eight.
It just seems like a lot of disruption. I mean, things are settled, right? But that would be my opinion, and I'd have to trust you, Dr. Weisling, and your staff. There's some really good operational reasons, such as, for instance, it'll improve our busing, you know, because we have problems getting middle school kids to school on time. And so if we had a school at Harley, we could get, we think we could improve by 10% the amount of middle school kids that arrive on time, okay, fine, but not just because it's a nice neighborhood school and it'd be nice to have it back. That, to me at this point, is not a good enough reason to reopen it. So, but if there's a good operational reason to do it, that would be fine. But I'll have to leave that up to you, Dr. Weisling, and your staff to figure that out. And then, I did have a question about, as I'm kind of focusing now on a lot of this, these, the Tetris, as you said. How much does transportation, how much do transportation considerations make a part of your decision on how you're going to do these plans? Because we, you know, we saw the lady up here, I think, at the last school board meeting, who says her child is still arriving 15, 20, 30 minutes
Forty-five.
late, and so these Tetris boards probably are not good for transportation, but especially when you have that, like, ones that are separate from, they're not contiguous. Anyway, that's my question, how much does transportation play a part?
It does play a part, and transportation will be at the table, running kind of the analysis through their lens. And so sometimes a move that looks good on paper, then transportation will come in and say, okay, but the way that routing is going to work is going to be problematic, and here's why. And again, I've been involved in a couple of these in my prior district, and sometimes it was, like, you have to listen to the whole explanation and go, oh, okay, that... And we wouldn't have thought about that because we're not the ones driving the route, right? So that's why you have transportation there. Mr. Rinaldi, you want to add?
Exactly, I mean, and we'll look at distance as well as time on the bus, as well as both man-made and natural obstacles for route efficiency as well.
I'm just hopeful that that will take, I'm sure it is. We've tried lots of things, we've got the vans, it's getting better, but it's still not where it needs to be. And if in our rezoning process, we can draw these zones to get these, especially the middle school kids, you know, there on time and home before 7 o'clock in the evening, that would be helpful. And if that means that a couple of kids have to move here and there to really get them to school on time, I'd like, I'm in favor of that. If that would help us solve our transportation problems, those are my only comments.
Yeah. I would agree with Mr. Tatum on the Harley. You know, if there were some issues, my only, again, I'll just spit this out before I get to Ms. Felton. That's an extra operational cost, that's extra teachers, on top of already opening all the middle schools and the elementary's we're doing now, to have to staff those, right? So that's just one more, but, you know, that's just another thing to think about with doing that. Ms. Felton?
Actually, I'm going to say that I agree with Mr. Tatum on this one. While I would love to have those kids to be able to walk to Harley, it has been about eight years since it closed. And if we can relieve the Tetris, since that's what we're calling it now. I did a tour at Harley Center three weeks ago. And, for example, the access program has a lot of very special things added in. They did a lot of construction during my last year there to make way for that program. And these are people who are generally wheelchair-bound, they have a bathroom now in every room, you know, ways to make their food, all of those things. And I would hate to, I wouldn't want to relocate them after all of that. So, but if there is, you know, an operational reason in which to do so, then I would support that. Again, transportation, of course, is an issue, and if there's an operational reason, then I would support that. But I also don't want to throw all those programs for a loop. I know our early learning is now there, and the outbuilding is getting ready to become the learning lab for SOAR and FOR. So there's a lot of considerations to take into that, and I wouldn't want to affect the programs that are now established. So it's, you know, up to you.
Yeah, Ms. Carr?
Well, actually, it's kind of us, but they do all the number diving for us. I would not be in favor of disrupting anything that's going on there now. It's been too long to even, you know, think about reopening that, in my opinion. I would be more in favor of, when we get to Tetris, again, I've talked about this before, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I talked about bus hubs, especially north of the river, and I think we need to look at that out east. Instead of all of our buses coming back to central Manatee County, they're all... If there was hubs north of the river, we're not going to have that traffic flow out to go pick up kids and then back again. Because I was coming into town yesterday, I think it was, and four buses were coming across the bridge. And I'm like, okay, they're coming back because they've done their routes, and they're coming home, and they're going to go back to Matske, then they're going to come back, get in their bus, go back over the river, and do their route again. So I keep advocating, I don't know if we need to do a special project for that. I don't know if we can even do a COPS project for doing these kind of hubs to minimize all of this. And that's part of it, routing these buses from school to school to school and having to do double backs. I think that would help with that, if we could, we got to forward think about that. We really do have to forward think about getting hubs in north of the river and out west.
You know, and right now, we probably have about a dozen buses out of Parish Community High School that we're using as a satellite. We're wet-fueling those buses so they don't have to come back to Matske, so we actually have a truck vendor that goes out there and fuels them and changes their DEF out as well. So, and that has turned out to be extremely positive. The drivers, because a lot of the drivers live out on that side of town as well, on that side of the county, so they're able to immediately get to their vehicles, immediately to get back. And really, the only time they come into Matske is for the one time during the month that they need to have their inspections done. So that's working fairly well. In addition, there's about seven properties that the county sent over to us. And Jamie and one of the county representatives have done some inspections so far. Some of them actually have fueling capacities on their facilities. And so we're working with the county as well to see if we can identify some other satellite locations. And as you know, we also have a bus at this point, along with a staff member, that's driving out in Mayaka as well. So, I mean, we're looking at some of those options. We're kind of excited about the county option and being able to dedicate and secure the vehicles on one of their piece of properties as well. So we are exploring all those at this point.
Awesome. And north of the river, we're looking at something up there?
Yep, exactly, a couple of the ones with the county are north of the river as well.
Okay, okay, because, yeah, that's a huge, huge deal to be able to do that. And I understand bringing it in once a month for the, you know, for the monthly maintenance and all of that. But futuristic, we're going to have to really look at building a mini Matske. I guess why we call that a mini Matske somewhere.
Yeah, and a lot of the expense is the fueling capacity and all that. So if we could team with the county and find a location where they can do their vehicles, we can do our vehicles, then it's kind of a win-win for both governmental entities.
Perfect. And I just don't bring that as just a happenstance. It's just, I know that partnering with some, with the county like that, and even the Sheriff's Department, because they have so hubs out in the county as well. One right there by Braden River, to be honest, that probably wouldn't be a good site. But we just opened the shooting range. How much more land do we have out there? I mean, that's pretty far out, but when you think about all the development, I'm just saying, that's pretty far out.
But it's our land, yeah.
Yeah, that's the city's land.
Cities' land, oh, all right. Well, we got an MOU with them, didn't we? We leased it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm sure we...
Put the buses on the skid pad.
Right, so I understand, it could still be an option. Right, we partner with the city to do that.
Yep.
We can also partner not with just the county, but we can also partner with the city, since that's way out there. That would be, in my mind, a perfect spot. If you had a mechanic that worked out that way, it'd be nice for the door.
Probably the biggest benefit, though, has been the vans. And we're going to continue to increase the size of our fleet, especially when we need to address the Project Heart children and things like that, where we're really running significant miles for a single student. And using a van to do that and not having to have one, a driver with a CDL has been a significant efficiency piece for us, too.
Right, and to that point, the vans, we buy. We buy the size we buy, so we don't have to have a CDL driver, is that correct, for the capacity that it holds?
For the capacity, as well as for it to be, I mean, there are limitations that the state puts us on, puts on us for the number of occupants. I believe it's nine occupants before you have to go up to the CDL level. So it's driven by statute.
Okay, so we've never really explored the option. I know we could have a bigger, kind of like what the nursing homes and even the county has, but you would have to have a CDL driver to operate that.
Well, even, but the vehicles that the nursing homes have are not qualified as a school bus. So there's also that level of regulation that's on top of the buses, too.
Okay, amid the nursing homes, but the county uses a significant size of a, I call them mini bus.
Like a church bus.
Church bus, thank you, okay. They transport, right, that would require a CDL.
If it qualified through DOE to be a state, a vehicle that we could use, yes, that would require a CDL.
Do you think that there would be interest in our bus driver pool that would rather drive a 24-capacity?
I think 25 is the, when CD, so at my church, we had 25 or 28, and I'd go get a CDL.
Right, exactly. I just think that there are some people that would probably come to the district as a bus driver specifically for those, that size of a bus.
But they're not able to be buses, correct, as of now?
Right.
They don't qualify as of now.
Okay.
Right.
So we got to talk to the legislature.
We'd have to get legislation to get that changed. That might be a priority.
Well, that's both state and federal, so...
Well, we might need to get...
The federal may be going away.
Federal might be going away, so we don't, right, give us the money, we'll spend it wisely.
Too soon, too soon.
Yeah, give us the money, we'll spend it wisely, and so it'd be a state legislator. Okay, that might be a future, that might be a future change.
Could be a priority for us.
Yes, I, yeah, get the other... Yes, I, yeah, get, get the other custodians involved with that, that'd be great.
Ms. Kenny?
One thing real quick, I just want to put a bow on this Harley conversation. I agree with everybody who spoke, and I, I don't think we should displace anyone from Harley. There are a lot of good, very specialized programs.
Yeah.
Who are entrenched on campus there, but if you look at our own numbers, capacity at Harley is only 12%. So we can, I believe, still operate a medium-sized middle school on that campus with SOARN4 there and Access and Sable and everybody else. So I don't think it would require any change to anybody that's already there. Just wanted to get that out. Thanks.
Can I, just one little thing? I'm looking at the maps online, and I looked at the middle school map, and then I scrolled down to the high school map, and then I realized a chunk of the county is missing. The north, northwest quadrant of the county is missing on the middle school map. Is there a reason?
It must have been one of the older maps. We did lose-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we lost the Palm View, and then they, then they brought it. But the, the newer maps from the presentation that we did on the 14th had Palm View on there. So I'll, I'll make sure that-
It's like the corner, yeah.
Yeah, it was the whole Palm View.
I didn't notice that.
Yeah, I'm like-
Kind of went away on us.
The county looks kind of funny.
Yeah.
So I just want to throw that out there.
Yeah. So I think the next topics are like the high school and that sort of thing. And, and so I've got a couple of things that I'd like to see and at least discuss. First one's kind of easy. And I said this in the very beginning, as we started talking about all of this, you know, even years ago. What Brayden River's, a potential addition to Brayden River, to me, would be interesting to see cost, time, and how that could act, how, how we could utilize that to help the Lakewood Ranch population. But ultimately, you know, my head, too, I think that the population that is growing is obviously east of Lakewood Ranch High School. And I just don't know, I'd still like to, to see what y'all's thoughts are about it. But I just, I don't know if, you know, how, how far, when you guys start doing the math, how far are we going to be taking kids from State Road 70 and past, you know, at River Run or, you know, River Woods, whatever? And if that's the case, then you're going all the way to, to Brayden River? So, I mean, I don't think that's necessary to be there. But I would like to see the option, just, is that an option to potentially do that we could maybe relieve, whether it be Lakewood Ranch or even Parish? I mean, when you look at the lines, just, that's a potential. Next one is probably something a little bit, well, not probably, it is definitely something bigger, more outside the box for what we have currently. But I think in, since I've been, been on the board, this is something that's been on my mind and an avenue that I believe will really set Bay Shore High School up and, and really be one of the, in my personal opinion, in years to come, when we would revamp this, would be a premier high school. And, and what I'd like to, to see us look at, and I know Dr. Weisong, you know, I've had this conversation, and I'll say, Board, I've had this conversation with many leaders in the community, from the EDC, the Education Foundation, to the Chamber, to everyone. I'd like for us to, to look at, as, and I bring this up because it's going to kind of come into choice and things like that with the high school level. But I'd like for us to explore advancing Bay Shore High School as like a polytechnical high school. So what I mean by polytechnical, if you go down to Sarasota, they have a polytechnical high school. But I would love to see, when you go to Bay Shore, your focus elective-wise is on trades, construction, auto, aviation, to maybe build our aviation program. It's just, obviously, the, the airport's right down the street, some, some cybersecurity coding. Maybe there's some gaming, esport type stuff in there, you know, as you create the, the, when you go into the, like STEM field like that. So I, I think that from a, from a standpoint of creating those programs there, and I know Dr. Gansmer here can maybe answer any questions, and I may be throwing stuff out, and you're like, whoa, 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 calm down. But, but that's okay. I, I think that that school would create some choice for kids to want to come there from all across the county. I mean, I think kids from Lakewood Ranch, or Parish, or Palmetto, doesn't matter what part of Brayden, in west, east, north, south. I think you would have kids that would want to go to that school to do their, their basic education. And, and I'm not worried about team sports, one and two, and seventh and fifth period. I'm worried about my CTE certification, potentially some, some pre-apprenticeship to apprenticeship at MTC to be able to move up as their certificate goes. I've, I've talked with 26 West at SEF. And 26 West, if you don't know, is like an entrepreneurial hub, so to speak. And she would be very interested in doing something to where entrepreneurial skills are taught there, so that if you want to go into a business eventually for yourself in a trade or something like that, that they're there for that. And so I think that, that if we could, if the staff would look into, how does that look, right? Like, how do we build these programs? And there's, you know, Dr. Weisong and I have talked, there's programs that, whether we do it ourselves or Florida Trade Academy, or whoever we would bring in to help bring in teachers and, and run that program. And obviously, there'd be some enhancements to Bay Shore and, 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 you know, as far as, and I know, Mr. Rinaldi, you would know better, and you guys did this, something like this in, in Seminole, where we create some of that building space, redo some of that building space into what we need for those, that polytechnical education. But I think we could have some, some really exciting things at that school. I mean, the aviation space, the drone stuff, I mean, it could be, it could be something that's really, really special. And I don't think that there's a, a, a whole lot of counties that offer this education to their kids. And so I, I also think at the same time, not only do I, I do believe we could potentially relieve some schools because of choice, we're not going to drive, it's normal choice, you got to transport yourself, right? But I do believe that that, for some of the undercapacity that we have currently on the west side, I think that will help that. I think you give the Bay Shore students their choice. Do you want to be in this quote-unquote "polytechnical"? If you don't, then you get to choose or choice between Manatee and Southeast, which then says, okay, from a, from a number standpoint, again, we know we're undercapacity. We know Manatee's at 80 and Southeast's about the same. So now you're able to potentially fill those seats and potentially pull students from everywhere else to fill Bay Shore potentially. And so I, I, I believe from a community standpoint, from a business standpoint, the businesses that are out there, especially in the trades, are, and auto are clamoring for people. They need people so bad. And there are some phenomenal opportunities as, as the baby boomers retire and businesses start trading hands for, for our younger generation to get in and potentially buy businesses and come into businesses. I think it's something that, that, that we could be on the cutting edge of, or really pushing and doing. With that, I would, I would go to the superintendent, and if, if the board is obviously interested in this idea, you know, the, the two thoughts that, that I had, and we've talked about this, I think this first one may be a little more difficult. But I want to get it out there, so that you can, you guys can talk about it, we've talked about it. Potentially, if you were to tell Bay Shore, if you were, if we had the polytechnical high school there with no zone, or very little zone, school zone, right? A two-mile radius, maybe, where you could walk to the school, right? I don't know what those numbers look like, I have no clue, right? But I would like to see them on a map, to see it, if, if that zone was a two-mile radius, how many students would that be? And could we potentially absorb those in Manatee and Southeast, right? So now those, those seats are full, and I, I believe, I, I know at Sarasota, with the Sarasota Polytechnical High School, they have, there are about 800, 900 kids with a waiting list of kids who want to come, right? So if potentially you had eight, 900 kids, if we were able to pull off a no zone, and you would have 800 kids, 900 kids potentially, and you could have more, obviously, with the, with the building size, with the programming, that could potentially be pulling hundreds of kids from everywhere else to help the capacity. Now, maybe that, you know, doesn't happen right away, of course, and maybe we can't even pull off the no zone. But I would like to see what that, or maybe a small zone, I'd like to see what that looks like. On the second part of that would be your normal zone, right? Like your normal, hey, we're keeping it the way it is, and like I said earlier, if you feel like, I don't want to, I don't want my child to go here, my child doesn't want to go, and do trades, he wants to do whatever else, that they can then choice out. And that, again, is going to fill capacity at, at our other west schools. So with that, I mean, I, I, that's, that's kind of my thinking of, of how to, to accelerate, I think, Bay Shore, and I think to help the west side, I think it would, you know, and there is some, obviously, cost to this, right? And we could talk about that at another time, we don't necessarily bring that up. But I do have, I've already talked with community members that are willing to do very similar to what, what is happening in Parish with Gettle, that they would jump in at, at Bay Shore and help support that program. And I think this is something that would really accelerate Bay Shore, bring great attention to Bay Shore, and really change what's, what's happening there. How we do it, no zone, small zone, regular zone, whatever. I mean, you guys, I would just like to see those maps and see what works. So with that, I'll jump in with, with comments here. I've got, are you?
I'm good, sorry.
Oh, no? Okay. Ms. Brack?
I do support that idea, though.
Yeah. That's a great idea. I would also say that that, with that, you could create the, what I've said before when I first got, the apprenticeship. Have an apprenticeship program to go along with that. If we have partners that are willing to help support this program, then, okay. First, we'll take your money. But with that, we'll also say, we'll do the MOU or whatever with you to allow our students to go to your place of business and do the apprenticeship along with it. And, and I've done that before, and it's very, it's a very good program.
Oh, yes.
And I know we do that with dental and, and all these other MOUs that we do, but this is a good, positive step for Bay Shore. And, and I go there for tennis matches, and those kids are amazing. They're eager for something different and something unique to their school. At, like Parish has the automotive, and we've been out there many times. This would be, I think, fantastic for not only the school, but the community as well. And I, I think we got, didn't they just, the big boys and girls club is not right, right there, too?
Right across the street.
Right across the street. So you may be pulling kids from that program into that. So I think it'd be awesome, in my opinion.
I'll let Mr. Tatum respond, and then if we can bring Dr. Gansmer up, if he wants to talk about some of the pre-apprenticeship and things that could potentially happen, if, if you'd like, and then you can reply to it.
I'll do kind of an overview response, and then if we've got a question, we can get Dr. Gansmer.
I mean, in principle, I'm in agreement with the idea that you have, Mr. Choate. I guess my concern is, right now, is how, how do we, how do we do that while we're doing this rezoning process? How do we make that work? On the other hand, if we do all the rezoning, and then we decide to do it, then we have to change at least that zoning over there. So can we do this concurrently? Can we stand up all these programs and make big changes at Bay Shore High School and rezone at the same time? I don't know, I mean, that's, that's why you get the big bucks, Dr. Weisong, to get all that stuff out.
The, first of all, the, the complete answer to that question depends on the next conversation, right? Which is, what are we doing with the possibility of an APH high school? Because depending on where we head there, that kind of impacts the high school zone timelines. So anything's possible, right? Because you can always do phase-ins and, and adjustments. I think there's some, I think, once the discussion flushes out a little bit more, then we may know a little bit more about timeline. I, I do think this is a good time to have the conversation, because if we go through the rezoning process, clean everything up, and then talk about this, you're potentially moving lines again. So even if it's a, you know, this is going to happen in this year, and then the following year, this is going to happen, it's better to kind of chart all that out in advance.
Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, you can go ahead. Yeah, so, so with regards to this concept, we've, we've been working on this for some time. First of all, I, I want to stress, we're, we're pleased with the progress that Bay Shore High is making under Principal Cooper. Academic metrics are up. We think we're going to have great outcomes. The Cambridge program was started there a couple of years ago. There are currently 65 or so students in the program. But next year, they're already at 95. So we're looking at a, you know, a, a good growth percentage year to year. That, so that, that advanced academic option is, is starting to cement in there. Enrollment at Bay Shore sitting, I think, right about 1370. So the size of the high school as it is now is certainly still viable. We do have capacity there, as we do at Southeast and, and at Manatee. I think as a leadership team, we're, we're intrigued. You've all seen the interest in automotive at Parish. We don't have an option on the other side of town. Mr. Rinaldi and I have done two of these buildings together in our last district, and very, very different programs and structure. But, you know, both projects were welcome additions to those schools. And what we're talking about is an additional building where you house some of these specialized CTE programs that include apprenticeship, that include industry certification. And so we've been, we've been thinking about that in, in relation to a couple of other advantages at Bay Shore High. First, we have green space there. So we have room to put up another building, you know, for this type of purpose. And then, obviously, the need is there. At the same time, we've also been talking about the growth at MTC, right? And, and the increasing demand post-secondary for these types of programs. And so the concept that Mr. Rinaldi, Dr. Gansmer, and others have been working on is perhaps constructing a new facility at Bay Shore High that would be co-operated by the school district and MTC.
Right.
So that when you're putting in these building trades labs, they're accessible both as a high school CTE program and as an adult post-secondary program, which you can run completely separately, but then you can also have the dual enrollment link right there. So we're looking at some different program and design options. So just generally speaking, Board, if you wanted to pursue this concept, you are looking at a capital investment, a significant one, because you're talking about larger laboratory spaces, particularly so that students can do very hands-on projects. You're also talking about a staff investment, right? Because these are specialized programs that require specialized instructors, sometimes at class sizes that are lower than your typical high school elective. So you're going to have that cost piece, and then, of course, you're going to grow into the program. So in the early years, your cost per student is going to be high, and then as interest grows, those, those costs per student are going to reduce. So I, I think that's one piece to think about. The question of, of zone, no zone, and kind of what that all looks like, we, we can run all of that analysis. We can look at, you know, a preference zone of a certain size around the school. As Mr. Choate said, I think it's important that if you design a school that's very specific, you do have to provide an exit route if that's not- you do have to provide an exit route if that's not a good skill match, right? Or a nod of, of interest. That's why typically comprehensive high schools, you've got everything. You've got athletics, you've got arts, you've got career and tech, there's something for all. If you're going a specialized school route, there are some other considerations. I think the other unknown is transportation. And, and yes, typically our school choice options don't come with transportation. But if you're talking about, um, families far away from Bay Shore who might be interested in these specialized programs, the question is gonna be, can they get there, right? And so we can, we can even do some survey work. Would, would you go to a high school that offered, um, electrical HVAC and welding? And if that would interest you, would you need transportation to get there or would you be able to figure out how to get there on your own? Right? Would, would transportation be the decision maker for you? Because what you don't wanna do is do one of these facilities. And then you end up with low enrollment because of lack of access. But of course, we know the pressure that the transportation system is already under. So those are, those are some of the things that we're exploring, um, right now. And so the, and so back to your question, Mr. Tatum, about timeline and, and can you get it done? This is the right time to do that analysis, um, if it's a road that the board wants to go down. And then we'll bring, you know, we bring those numbers back. And again, that's, that's why the policy says we, we do three options, not one, right? Because we may draw it a couple of different ways and then you can see what the numbers look like. But those are kind of our initial thoughts. Really exciting from a programming perspective. I, I think there's a lot of, um, great opportunities. It is a big investment upfront, um, but it, it could be transformative, not just for one school community, but for our whole community.
Well, and, and I'm glad you kind of brought the MTC partnership and things. Because as you move, as obviously it's great to have that, Mike. And I'm gonna preface what I'm about to say with the eighth high schools, we'll talk about that in a minute. But my question is, if there were, happened to be, uh, MTC on property that they're absorbing, I don't know, I'm just, twenty percent of the property, like whatever, make a number up. From an operational standpoint, staff, running the plant itself, would there be some kind of agreement that it wouldn't be under our, like our operation would be X amount of percent and theirs would be under there? So theoretically be losing some operation because they're taking some of that over?
Yeah, I think we'd have to.
It could be insignificant number, but I don't know, but.
We'd have to work through all those details and, um, you know, we, we talked, um, you know, even about, you know, if you have an instructor that's qualified to do both secondary and post-secondary, right? Then you, you split funding between, you know, between the two entities. No differently than, you know, a, an itinerant teacher who spends, you know, uh, time at two different schools, right? That shows a split funded on our budget, on our staffing. So yes, there are some options there.
And I say that just because if, we've talked several times about operational costs of schools. And if potentially you could partner and, and have that space. And, and for those who remember, I don't, I mean, I, I think you were here, Ms. Kennedy. VOTEC, what, that was NTI, like that, that was, that was the location, right? And, um, and, you know, speaking of transportation in that central corridor, if they can't get to MTC out east, how are they? You know, they can't get certificates and have this opportunity to potentially, you know, grow themselves if transportation's an issue of, of getting out there. So I bring that up, the operations standpoint, because as we move into the eighth high school, not only is there a capital expense, there's an operation expense. So if you could potentially, you know, merge MTC with, with there and be able to relieve yourself of someone's operation cost, that if we do an eighth high school, we're gonna take it on there, it would help, right? With that eighth, eighth high school. Ms. Felton?
Um, I, I really like this idea. I would really love to see, we've got a lot of great things going on out east. And I would like to see something like that, uh, in town as well. I had a question about the transportation now. Once upon a time, and it may have changed, um, there was transportation for IB. Is that still included? We still do transportation for IB? Okay.
Yes, and, and we do hub stops, so it's not to the door, but, but we do hub stops.
Okay, so, um, maybe then that would be an option as well, to do hub stops, uh, for, for a program like this as well. But that was, that was really, I wanted to ask that question and, and say that I sound, that sounds like a really awesome thing for our kids.
Awesome. Before we move on to the eighth high school, which is kind of our next topic here, I do have something that just, I'd also like just to think about as we move forward. And it's not necessary, I, I guess it is zoning, but I, I do wanna, you know, we've obviously as a, as a board, well, I guess it was the previous board, but I would, I would assume, I know where Mr. Kennedy, Ms. Felton would agree.
Sorry.
That early learning is something that we, uh, you know, was, uh, the number one of our parties. After safety, you know? And, and especially with our strategic plan. And so, um, we, we thankful to the voters, um, early learning is, is inside of the village, right? And so I definitely want us to think about these places where we are under capacity and there are rooms. How can we capitalize on early learning, right? And a lot of times it's, you've got the biggest need in no space, right? And, and you've got the space where there's no big need, right? So what's the connection is potentially transportation, right? And so I know it all kind of falls back on you, Mr. Rinaldi, and I'm, I'm kidding. But, but I, but, but, but in a sense, I do just want us to think about, how do we utilize some of those open spaces? I do believe it, the early learning, uh, and, and VPK, et cetera, could take advantage. But again, what's the cost of the transportation, et cetera? I mean, that all plays into it. But I just wanna make sure that's, that's kind of on our forefront with some of the undercapacity stuff.
It is, Chairman, and, and just keep in mind that, um, remember back to the workshop last month, we talked about fish capacity and program capacity. And so, you know, that's another part of this conversation is where we forecast we need, uh, early learning space. Adjusting, and remember, all these percentages you see are fish capacity. But if we make those adjustments in the program capacity and then go to mapping, you're gonna see those percentages of utilization go up.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah.
And, and so it is something to keep in mind. The other, the other factor to, to think about with those early learning classrooms, and again, some schools have more than other spaced on space, is that more early learning classrooms is a greater administrative burden.
Sure.
And so, um, and we're hearing that from our principals. And so, you know, we talk about how we build in more support for schools with larger number of pre-kindergarten students. But when we add those supports, sometimes the funding model then flips upside down because those students are not funded the same way that our K through twelve students are. And so we're, we're working through that internally. But it absolutely is a consideration as we look to the future.
Awesome. Board, uh, it's twelve thirty, typically right around breaking for lunch. I'm assuming we want to. We've got the, the next part of the eighth high school. We've got, uh, my, my, the last, the third part of this, uh, workshop, family cafe conference, I'll talk about very briefly. So do we wanna take a lunch? So we'll do a thirty, it's upstairs, yeah. So we'll do a thirty-minute lunch, uh, we'll come back at one oh five, um, to reconvene. So we are in recess.
Ambassador's degree.
Ambassador's degree. Ambassador's degree.
Lights?
Lights?
Yeah. Good. I mean... I don't know. Like...
Yeah. And I don't think...
You don't?
Like...
...
Welcome back everybody from lunch. Just don't fall asleep in this last little bit here. So we want to move on, I think Dr. Weisong to this last section of the rezoning portion. You know, obviously we've talked a lot about elementary, middle and some high. And I know you want to talk about the eighth high school. So did you want to kind of tell it, give us your feedback first and then hear from us?
Yeah, I'll make a couple of comments and then I'm actually going to turn it over Mr. Rinaldi. Here's a couple of slides in the deck that he'll go through with you. So board members, we've been proceeding with planning based on what had already been announced to the community that that an eighth high school would be built on the property that the board already owns in Lakewood Ranch. There was some conversation at the last meeting, at the last workshop about cost and growth and proximity. And so we wanted a lot some time today for the board to have that conversation. Because if we're going to, if we're going to proceed further, we really need to get going on that project. And if we're going to change course in any way, obviously we need to know that. So we wanted to again, give some time for you all to be able to talk with each other with your thoughts. Again, Mr. Rinaldi is going to kind of walk you through where we're at right now and what some of the options are along with costs and timelines.
Thank you, Dr. Weisong. There are a couple ways that we could construct the new high school. One method would be for us to identify an existing prototype and reuse that prototype. We've looked at, right now Sarasota County is building Wellen Park. Right around $200 million. It's a full comprehensive high school. It does have some different program requirements in that campus that we typically do not do. So we would, if we were to reuse that prototype or any other prototype at the same time, there are a couple going on at Orange County Public Schools and Osceola County Public Schools just started theirs as well. But taking on another district's prototype, we would have to make some changes, modifications to get it so that it is truly a Manatee County prototype. One other option is to reuse the existing Parish Community High School design and actually be able to accelerate construction and accelerate the overall design. As you can see, what we had, Schenkel Schultz, who was the original project architect for Parish Community, they overlaid an option for the layout for the Parish Community High School. And as you can see on this property, they're able to get the existing footprint of that building on approximately 80 acres. We do have 100 acres there. So to the left or to the west, there's an additional 20 acres available on that site for other usage, be it a Lakewood Ranch office, a pre-K facility, or even at 20 acres, we could do a very modified of our existing elementary prototype and get that on that campus as well. So there are a number of options. But you know, the big piece in order to get us constructed is to do it in multi-phases. And what they're showing is, in the dark orange color are the, really the core facilities in one academic building. And that would allow us to open the campus with 1,250 student stations. And then you can see they're showing two future campus locations. So we would be able to build it out to 2,500 student stations. Or if we even did one of those future building pads as a three-story building, we could actually get it up to a little bit under 3,000 as well. So there's multiple options on how we could configure the existing Parish campus, which from the standpoint of maintenance, from the standpoint of functionality, is working very well for the district right now. So it's one of the reasons we're looking at it. The feedback we get from administrations, parents, students, faculty, everybody is that it's a good campus. And it's good from a security standpoint. Now, a couple of the prototypes we were looking at were actually single building prototypes. So it was 300,000 square feet in a single building, which is about the size of a mall. So it's, and you know, there are some benefits of having, you know, one way in, one way out and all that. But from the standpoint of functionality on a high school campus and giving some decent green space out on the east side of town, courtyard configurations as well as what is happening with the athletic fields. We felt that one of the possibilities was to reuse the Parish campus. The next slide is they took a look and gave us an idea on what the overall costs would be. So we're around $115 million. Now keep in mind, this is only the GMP. So you would add about another 20% for the architectural fee, for furniture fixtures and equipment, for the IT and those sort of things. So really to do this first phase would be around 139 million to 140 million for the total project budget. But the GMP would be around 111,000, $115,000 with the present market as it stands. And you can see the number of student stations on the left side would be 1,275. And it's about a 200,000 square foot facility that we're doing there. So if we were to build it out with another academic building of around 70,000, you would be right at 2,200, 2,300 student stations on this facility. And then the next, we took a look at the overall schedule as well with the thoughts that by November 11, 2025, we'd be able to start construction and then we'd be able to wrap up for the following school year.
Mr. Tatum? Oh, I'm sorry, were you done?
I'm done, yes, thank you.
Well, I got a, just a couple of quick questions about the map. So the prototype. What are the, to the left of the gym and between that and the track and the all-purpose field there, what are those boxes? What is that?
To the left of the gym are the tennis courts and there are some basketball.
Oh, so basketball courts, okay.
Yeah, outdoor.
Yeah, it just doesn't like really look all that.
Yeah.
The other thing I would say, well, I'll go ahead and let Mr. Tatum.
So this is obviously a really big decision. And I was sitting here thinking about it and I've actually thought about it just over the last few months, you know, $200 million, a big chunk of change, obviously. And as I'm thinking about it, I'm thinking like, I don't have all the information that I would probably want to have to make this decision. And even if I had a lot more information, I don't know that that I would really know how to make the decision. I was, I was thinking like if I had to make the decision about building a rocket ship, you know, and I don't know, I just, I'm just gonna, we're gonna have to make it. But I guess the point I'm trying to get to is I'd like to hear all of your thoughts on what are the pros and what are the cons and why do we need a 200, you know, what are the benefits of having the $200 million high school? And how much growth are we expecting? And could we just put 300 more seats at Bradenton, Lakewood Ranch and Parish? And maybe, or 350 seats? And then I know that pushes us up towards, like I've talked to Principal Dawkins about this 2,700 and he seems to think like, that's about the most I'd really want to have as far as discipline. And then when it gets too big, and all that gets rolled in here. I mean, if it was just a cost standpoint, I guess I would, I would probably just say, put 350 extra seats at Parish, Braden River and Lakewood Ranch and hold off on this big expense. But then if we really needed it, then it's, well, it costs this much today and it'll cost this much plus X tomorrow. So see what I mean? I'm like, that's why we hired you guys to help us get, you know, explore all those questions. So now that I've kind of laid that out there, try and respond if you'd like. Help me understand why we should build a rocket ship, but go ahead.
Is that something very similar, you guys had questions like that?
Right, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So I mean, from the standpoint of adding additional capacity. So at Parish with the new classroom, we're really where we need to be. And I don't, would not recommend we do any additional additions there. At Braden River, we do have some spaces, but we do have some limitations too. One of the issues is our, what's going to be a fight with DOE in regards to the location of that existing cafeteria building. The ideal would be to demolish that cafeteria building, stretch out the central courtyard there, build some potentially two or three-story additions and then relocate that cafeteria building to the logical space maybe it needs to be. Now DOE, when we go through the Castaldi, I don't think that we're going to do that. So that's going to force us to expand the campus probably to the east where there's some limit, there is some area there, but it's limited. And it's going to limit how many additional student stations we can put on there. When you say 300 to 400, we did add around 460, I believe is what we added on Parish there. So we know the footprint size, that's kind of pushing it. Now, we do have other campus space there where, that is contiguous to our property to the north where we could, if we're going to entertain like a ninth grade center or something along that line, we'd be able to do that. But that kind of gets into a completely different concept of the creation of ninth grade centers.
And when you say the Castaldi report, what you mean by that is that that there are rules about, or the state has actually approved the destruction of a whole or a partial school. And we're not allowed to make that decision locally, even though our money's the one that's paying problems.
I mean, if you go back to even Blackburn and all that, I mean, there were a couple buildings there that we just logically needed to be demolished. But since they were not 36, 37 years old, the state said no. So we ended up renovating and remodeling. That is definitely, it's definitely going to be an uphill battle in order to do that with that cafeteria building.
So maybe this is for Dr. Weisong and Ms. Sellers. The recent cops that you all went up and got funded, is that the correct terminology? Is funded? So is that money? Because my understanding is when you get that money, you have to use it for certain projects, right? So was the high school part of those?
No.
Cops, no, so we don't have to worry about that. So would we have to, we'd have to go back and borrow more money to build the high school or?
We would, Ms. Sellers, maybe you want to come to the table. But yes, we would, we would do another cops instrument.
Right.
To get this built. Keeping in mind that if we, if we go with an alternative like adding capacity on to other high schools, we'll have to borrow to do that as well.
Right.
And so then you get into, if you take Mr. Rinaldi's initial concept, right, of a partial demo and then a stretching of that courtyard, that's an expensive project too. It may not be the cost of, you know, a 1,200 student new high school, but you're still going to spend a good amount of money to do that.
So those cops were just for, I can see the chart, but I don't have it memorized. What schools were those for, what projects? Okay, okay. And we haven't borrowed any more money for the middle school? Or have we borrowed, are we using local funds for those, right? For our middle school and the K-8, is that right?
Correct, those are the different, the impact that we had.
Impact fees, and, okay, okay. So how about at Lakewood Ranch, Mr. Rinaldi? I took a tour around there the other day. Is there any room to put another, like if you're looking at the new building, looking at, you know, it's in front of you, then off to the left where the, where the portables used to be? Is there some room over there or not?
With Lakewood Ranch, actually when we built the new building last year, we had to relocate retention ponds and all in order just to get that building shoehorned in. I mean, there are, there's some property by where the ag programs are, but you're getting a little bit remote from the core. And from a security standpoint, you really begin to spread that campus out. It's not centered anymore. It's not centered anymore around that courtyard. You begin to have bits and pieces all over, which from a security standpoint, isn't great. Um, and I, I ran some quick, quick numbers. For instance, uh, if we were to do the, um, act, when a typical academic building with about four hundred additional student stations would cost us around thirty-five million. Um, is, is what we would be looking at for that.
So four, four hundred student stations costs about thirty-five?
Yes, around sixty-nine, um, thousand square feet at about four hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot.
Okay. I, I, I've thought about this a lot, so excuse me, I just have some questions that I.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cause this is a big, this is a big decision, two hundred million dollars of taxpayer money.
That's a lot.
So what about the idea of sharing stadiums and stuff like that? I've talked to principals and they're like, ah, you know, I, I need my own stadium because I, you know, for sports and it's just a nightmare and gotta transport kids. But on the other hand, you know, if we can save fifteen or, anyway, what are your thoughts about sharing some facility? Cause one of my concerns is that we have these, we're now gonna have these three high schools that are literally as the crow flies, only about seven or eight miles apart. I went on Google Maps and did that and, you know, can we share some of these facilities? On the other hand, we may end up just having to build a stadium one day anyway. We might as well do it now when it's cheaper, but anyway, one of my questions.
I'm, I'm actually gonna, since we have Ms. Scarborough in the back as a high school principal, I, uh, I think she can, um, maybe give you a little bit of insight.
Sure, yeah.
Um, I will say from a scheduling standpoint, you use your stadium or your fields every day by somebody. So to have two schools share that, um, the wear and tear would be incredible. And the, the scheduling of that, of when they have that, because with both female and male sports, between practices and events, there's rarely a time to even groom the fields. So that would be really a challenge. I think they did it for a little while, many years ago, um, before Bayshore built a stadium and used to have to play their football games at Manatee High on Thursday nights. And it took the local community because the school board didn't, they got together and said, we've gotta build a stadium here because it just didn't have that same facility. So it sounds fabulous, but as much use as the facilities have for everything, I think it'd be really difficult.
Okay, that's great. That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah.
That's why I said, I, it's like, I'm trying to, it's like building a rocket ship to me. I don't know, you tell me how to build a rocket ship. I guess I'll say yes, cause I'm the elected official and sign the check for taxpayers' money, but I don't know how to build a rocket ship. Okay, so then, um.
Mr. Tatum, maybe while we have Ms. Scarborough, maybe she can speak to, to the, I think, uh, there was a comment earlier about, um, numbers, right? And, and, and supervision levels and.
Yeah.
You get to, um, really stretch your staff on that. And then when you talk about the core facilities as well, if you add on to say a Braden River High, you will not have enough space to feed them adequately during lunchtime because it's just not gonna be a large enough space. Um, Lakewood Ranch is already stretched in terms of their cafeteria. You have to use inside and outside every single day. So if it's inclement weather, um, just with the, the numbers they have there. I know my kids went there, they ate outside every day. Um, and you might get a seat inside eventually if you're a senior, just because of how tight it gets. And they've done a great job covering and things like that. But there gets to a, um, a tipping point, I think, with, with the security standpoint that Mr. Rinaldi talked about. While we have some places that have three thousand or plus students, it is really a, a challenge and stretches a lot.
Right, so what, like, as a former high school principal, what's the, what would be the maximum number of students you would want to see at a high school where you think, I can still maintain control of this and this problem problems aren't gonna get out of hand? What's the size, you know?
Twenty-five hundred is what I think is a, is a comfortable, is, is the, is pushing it.
Pushing it.
I mean, anywhere between two thousand to twenty-five hundred is good. But when you get past twenty-five hundred to three thousand that they have down in, uh, you know, some of the other southern counties, I wouldn't even want to imagine that. I've visited some of those schools that are three stories and all that. And it's just, it's a massive thing to undertake.
Okay.
So.
And then Mr. Rinaldi, I, I assume you've done whatever magical formulas you run to figure out how many students are gonna, we might need out in that area based on the housing projections and things like that. And so what is, what are those numbers? In the next five years, there will be X number of high school students that we think we're gonna have to accommodate between now and twenty thirty or something to. Sorry to put you guys on the spot like that, but. Give you a minute or two to look that up.
Here, I'll get, I'll check.
Well, in, um.
Yes, we'll see.
Joe, I can put that slide up.
You got that?
Yep.
So Ms. Scarborough, since you're there, if we have just a twelve hundred student high school to start off with, they, they play at a lower level of sports, I'm just curious, right? Is that true basically, cause it?
What we've done the last couple of schools that opened is we started with a ninth and a tenth grade class. So you're looking at about five hundred students, you know, four fifty to five hundred, and then they grow into the high school. So when you open at twelve hundred and then you add those buildings, by the time you have the numbers of a typical high school, those other buildings will be done.
Okay.
So I think this alternative plan Mr. Rinaldi has developed, has the new school open, and grows with the students by adding the next building.
Okay, so do you, I'm just curious, do you start out with sports?
You do JV usually.
You do JV.
What, what you do is you do JV. Um, when we opened Lakewood Ranch many moons ago, we, we started all the teams did JV. Then when they're juniors, you make that determination, um, with really the ability and the numbers that you have, what's the best thing for the kids? So at the end of the day, if you feel like it's better competitively at, by that, um, second year to have varsity, you do. But sometimes some sports may just stay at the JV level for size or ability levels, um, to make sure that you're not putting a, a disadvantage. You wanna put a kid out there, um, before they're ready. And then you can grow into your athletics as well as your different competitions that you may do.
And whether it's, what do we have, single A, double A, triple A, four A? That's all dependent on the population of the school, right?
Correct.
As you get more students, ninth and tenth, you have a thousand, you add another grade, you have fifteen hundred, you add another grade, you have tw- two thousand, then you, you go up in letters, more As.
Yeah, you go up in the classification by the size of your school. And then it depends on your, um, what competition level you're at. You're at same size schools for your competitions. And then if you're waiting to do varsity for some sports till they're seniors, then you may not be at that classification level in terms of going for, you know, district or regionals type of a thing. So you can grow into it. But some sports, depending on what it is in the area, can be very successful those first, first couple of years. And sometimes you're not winning a whole lot that first year or two, but it's a lot of opportunity to, to learn and, and play, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Oh, just to reiterate on that, um, I was at Braden River, uh, in oh seven, so like two years after it had opened. And they did their first two years, what Ms. Scarborough was saying, is as JV. And it was at a point in two thousand eight, their third year, they had the numbers, they were ready to go varsity. You know, and actually have a, that was their first varsity schedule, um, of, of all sports. So, yeah, and I think, I think Parish may have done the same thing just recently.
I think so too, yeah, I think we, that's how we did it at Lakewood Ranch.
And maybe like their third or fourth year, yeah.
Yeah, cause I was coaching at Lakewood Ranch back then. And I remember I had JV for two years in a row and then we moved to varsity program, so.
Okay, great. Mr. Rinaldi, you got those numbers?
Yeah, so, uh, the growth is one thousand two hundred and ninety-nine high school students is what we're estimating. And with, uh, the deficit at Lakewood Ranch High School, which is a hundred and ten that exists today, so we're looking for additional capacity of one thousand four oh nine, which is a little bit less or a little bit more than the first phase where, where we, we show on the presentation.
Let me follow those numbers real quick before, cause I'll lose my train of thought.
Yeah.
I'm getting to be sixty and it'll go away and then I'll forget. So when you say deficit, what you mean is overcrowding?
Yes.
So we want to relieve that?
Lakewood Ranch is a hundred and ten students.
So you took the twelve ninety-nine, added whatever the deficit is at Lakewood Ranch? And that number of twelve ninety-nine was between now and how many years from now?
Probably, uh, with the, um, a, amount of, uh, certificate of occupancies we see in that area, it, it's probably about six to seven years.
Okay.
Is what we're predicting.
So between now and twenty thirty-two, something like that.
Yeah, so it's in, in the five-year plan for me.
So, so does that mean, excuse me, Chair, I was, I'm trying to follow.
No, you're good, that was my question, you're good.
Okay, so, so, so we might not have to build, I mean, if we did that, if we did this twelve hundred seat school here, we, we would maybe take a look again in what, twenty thirty or something and say, is it adequate? Do we need to add or, or maybe we don't, maybe, maybe we don't?
Yeah, I mean, we, I would, I would predict probably five years out, uh, that we would look to, what we would obviously do, the future building pad, the way we did at Parish Community. So we'd be able to, to build it relatively easily. But yeah, in five years, we'd probably revisit to see if we needed to add additional capacity.
One of the nice things about that timing is that, uh, due to term limits, whether I get reelected or not, I won't be on the board anymore. I don't have to deal with that problem. So, so if we, so the twelve hundred, so the twelve hundred seat building would cost us how much again? I wrote it, a hundred and forty million, is that right?
Yeah, about a hundred and thirty-nine on, yeah, a hundred and forty.
All right. And then was it, was it, weren't there some options here about, what does it say? Low range, mid-range, high range, what is that all about?
Uh, that, it's looking at, i- if you look above that, uh, they talk about Orange County Public Schools, um, Marion County, and, and they also compared to what we paid in, at Parish right now. So, uh, they were looking at costs per square foot. Probably Marion is closer to us where they were, you know, mid-range, they were saying five hundred and fifty, just projecting out that, you know, a year from now, that's may, maybe what we're seeing. But I think they're a little on the high end for that.
And so Ms. Sellers, we were projecting, there you go again. We were projecting to have to borrow another two hundred million dollars? Almost all the money if we're built the whole school, is that right or?
On that high school, initially we had been talking two hundred million, but this would change that scope to be something smaller, like a hundred and forty million instead.
Okay, and that would save us?
Fifty-two is what.
That's at least sixty million on that one specific project.
Right.
And, and they were looking at some other ones, um, a couple additions at two other places, you know, that were like, um, uh, not as part of this discussion, but to grow some of the other ones that are there.
We, we, we talked about, um, the likelihood that we would need to go ahead and add the extension building onto Lake Manatee K A and Harvey North River, right, given the growth we're seeing in those areas.
Okay.
So the idea was package all of that together.
Together at one, just similar to the twenty twenty-three where we had several remodeling project, there were five that were all grouped together. We can have different remodeling ones also added to the COPS, not just for new, new constructions. We would add it in like that and have it as one, on one COPS.
So if we built the whole high school and we wanted to do these additions, we'd have to try and borrow more than two hundred million dollars or?
No, you, you'd be looking at a hundred and forty for what he said for the high school. And then I think there were seventeen point five million for each of the other two additions, I think at that point in time. So like a hundred and seventy-five for those pieces. So it would be under, under the two hundred million.
Right, but, but if we wanted to build the whole, the whole high school, like two thousand seats at the high school, then we'd have to build, we'd have, we'd have to do two hundred and forty mil, yeah, two hundred and forty million worth, worth of borrowing. Is that true or?
Yeah, it would be the two hundred million plus the, uh, thirty, thirty-five for the two expansions, plus the ten for the MTC, so yeah, two forty.
Would that, would that put us well over that fifty percent?
No, no, the fifty percent, remember, was point seven five. Um, we already looked at it. If we were to go to that max level of two forty, two hundred and forty-five million, you'd still only be looking at point six six of that. That's only fifty percent of the allowable range. But this is the good target that the advisors had recommended. But you can't even go higher than that. So we're definitely, um, well under that, even when we pick up the two hundred and forty-five million.
And reminding me what that number means again, the fifty percent number, it's fifty percent of?
Well, that, that was just to be fifty percent of what you are, um, allowed, um, under a statute that you can use debt service payments on out of that one point five mil leverage.
It's three hundred and forty million on the slide, I think it's a little bit further down than that. The slide says, uh, the COPS that we just did for the two elementary schools would leave us approximately three hundred and forty million until we hit that fifty percent.
Okay.
Is what.
Right, right, so the two forty-five is well below that.
Leaves us a hundred million before we get to the.
Mm-hmm.
And so the three hu, the fifty percent mark means if you took all the fu, all of the funds that you bring in with the one point five capital mil, and you divided it by fif, or you times it by point five, then you wouldn't, and then you look at how much your debt payment was every year, you wouldn't want to go over. You could, but maybe ideally you wouldn't want to have, let's say it was a hundred and fifty million that we bought in, brought in with one point five, the one point five mil capital tax. You wouldn't want your annual debt payments to be any more than seventy-five million. Is that, is that?
Right.
Wow.
Amaze myself, I'm finally getting this stuff. Okay, you have me too. Uh, finally, it's only taken two and a half years. But you said we, but we could go up to seventy-five, like you could go up to a hundred million of annual payments or, but you wouldn't want to go more than seventy-five percent of the hundred and fifty million as your annual.
But, and again, that's just as, as a, as a guide to not go over.
Right.
And still, I mean, it's allowable, but, but you, you have the same, the right concept.
The point seven five, you would, seventy-five percent. And, and I'm, I assume though that as, the, the bigger the percentages of your, of that one point five mil that you use for annual debt payments, the higher maybe your interest rate goes maybe? Because you're, it's more risky, like, or not necessarily or?
No, not necessarily because.
It's not like running up your credit card?
That interest is based on each of those different, uh, those series that go out. Like we had the twenty twenty-three and so those particular interests that get set, that's based on each of the issuances. It's, it's, um, uh, and, and it does get added up to, um, uh, but I think what you're thinking of when you're talking about interest rate, um, the, this, um, uh, level look at, 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 um, fifty percent of the allowable of the one point five levy, isn't it exactly what you're talking when you're?
What I'm saying is.
Getting a better rate, it, it doesn't work.
So let's say, so right now, let's say that we're at point four nine or forty-nine percent of that. So remember, in my, in my example, seventy-five million, I'm trying to make the numbers easy. Seventy-five million was a fifty percent point. And we're at forty percent, so whatever that is, sixty, we're paying sixty million dollars a year out of that hundred and fifty million is debt service. But then we go up, we borrow a bunch more money and now we have to go up to seventy-three percent of our debt service. And so that's a hundred and thirty million dollars of the hundred and fifty million we're paying every year. When the people who loan us money look at that and say, gee, you're running up your credit card, so to speak, they don't say, well, you're getting closer to that limit, how much you're, you know, you're, you're supposed to spend. So we want a higher interest rate because there's more money on your credit card.
No, they, they don't increase it because of that, no.
Okay.
Whenever you go up to the bonds, so yeah.
Okay, that's good. I just want to make sure that as, as we're borrowing more and more money, I'm not really a fan of, but it is what it is.
Like, like a mortgage, it's not doing it like, like a mortgage would be or.
Our credit rating, it's not gonna drive higher interest rates or something like that?
No, no.
Okay.
Not because you're getting more. They, they will end up looking to see where the debt service levels are in regards to the one point five, um, mil that's coming in, so.
Okay. Thank you for indulging me with all those questions.
Absolutely.
Important questions. Uh, initially, right, at this point, if I had to make a decision today or not, I would probably say, all said and done, go with the twelve hundred, you know, uh, student plan that Mr. Rinaldi's come up with as a best of all, you know, scenarios. But that's what I would think today if we had to make it.
Same line before I switch, as we're talking about money. What is, i- is in that one point five mil, impact fees are not included in that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so do we know, but we can use the impact fees to pay for these, correct? Do we know in that chart that we just showed with the number of students, we don't know what the impact fees theoretically will be because we don't know how many homes, et cetera?
Well, yeah, we, we know that units have been approved, but we don't know at this point the, the number of bedrooms, which drives whether you pay, what, what you pay for the impact fees, yeah.
And, and, and we really can't, we really can't, we can't really look to say, this is what it could possibly be. I mean, cause it's a, it's a crap show, I mean, you just don't know. Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of talk, a lot of people say, use your, use all the impact fees, like use the impact fees. Well, if we don't know what they are, how can we, you know what I mean? Like with that, so it's not really in, in our decision-making theoretically, because we're gonna, we would have to go out for the COPS. But it is because we can use that to pay obviously back.
We, and we use it for other projects as well.
Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah, so, so it's a, it's a, a plan where we, we literally have a capital accountant that looks at, is this going to be freeing up? Is this gonna, is this smarter to maybe move this shifting of the funds? Uh, where's the best place to be able to do? Whether it was the impact or your sales tax or your one point five mil, so.
Right, okay.
Analyzing it, because there's certain allowable that you can do with certain ones that you can't do with the other ones.
Right, right.
Like, yeah, so.
So, I mean, general taking a step back in time where our impact fees were around six thousand dollars for a unit and it didn't differentiate size and, and all that. So with the forty-four thousand units, you're right around two hundred and sixty million dollar potential over the next seven to eight years.
Okay. Okay. Was that all you had?
That's all I have, yes, thanks. That was enough, I think.
Miss Spray? Miss Bray? That was good.
Hurt my own brain.
Hurt mine. I didn't bring it. I, I left it on a table at home, a five-year plan that had this project in it. And it was a hundred and eighty million. So that's one. So I don't know what happened to the five-year projection that it jumped that many millions. I'm guessing the cost of goods, I expect the cost of goods and a whole lot of other things to go down. My thing is the timing. Well, let, let me go through all my little notes first. The five-year plan that was presented, I think it was in January, I think it was last year, or it might have been in twenty-two, I don't remember. I think it was twenty-three, though. The Castaldi Report. If you look at the Castaldi Report, and who puts that together with the, what's the other one called? There's a Castaldi and then there's the other one. I don't remember which one it is. Jacobs, yeah.
Jacobs Report, oh, excuse me, yes.
Right. If you look at those two together, and you look at who put those together, it's some of our architects and designers that go out and assess. So, it's kind of like, okay, there's a crack in the concrete here, you need to get that replaced. Okay, everybody's got a crack in their concrete. My driveway's got cracks in its concrete, but the quote for that was seventeen thousand dollars. I'm not going to put seventeen thousand dollars in a cracked concrete right now. Just did three for a porch. So, so I, that, I don't, I don't put a whole lot of faith in the Castaldi, to be honest with you. The basketball courts. Every, just about every tennis court I've visited during season, there's empty basketball courts, outside basketball courts. But I go inside and there's a gym with basketball courts. So why are we doubling that? Why are we putting a basketball course outside when we have a gym inside? I just don't think there's a need to have basketball courts outside. That's just my opinion. Go to Bay Shore. Bay Shore has outside basketball courts right next to their tennis courts. And when kids come for their match, they practice on these basketball courts while they're warming up, while they're waiting to play. And I got to talk to you about turning one of those courts into a practice court with a backboard, whatever, I don't know, something out there. And then at, I think it was Parrish Community Tennis Courts, right next to their courts, are unused outside basketball courts. So I don't know why we have to go through that expense of putting in these basketball courts outside. So if, if it were a me thing, I wouldn't do that. I just wouldn't. You got inside basketball courts? Nope. Isn't that a, a winter sport anyway? A spring, a winter?
Winter.
It's a winter sport, right. And they're, and they're all held inside, correct?
If I could speak to that, so you're probably coming for the, the actual competitions between them, but during the school day with P E classes, usually there's three to four P E classes, depending on how many teachers you have and how large your school is, and they rotate. So one week my class is outside, uses the outside courts during the school day for my physical education class, the next week I get the inside courts, next week I might be in the weight room. So they are used during the school day many times for your, for your classes, for actual classes. During season, depending on the school, they may use it for a J V practice outside, or so they're not all in the gym and you don't have practices till late in the evening, whether you have a freshman, a J V, or a varsity. So they, they could be a part of a rotation during the P E during the school day and during season after. So it may be during tennis, right now, you don't see anybody out there because we're past basketball season, but they may be using them during the school day. But I can't speak to when you're there.
For maybe P E activities during the day, is that what you're telling me?
Correct. Yes, the, the P E teachers will rotate who gets the gym, who has to go to the outside courts, who goes to the outside field, and they rotate between the facilities for whatever they may be working with.
Like we said earlier, Bay Shore's got an awful lot of green space that could almost be used for P E activities, in my opinion, but, yeah, all right. Impact fees, using impact fees to, to build. I know we collect that as we go, as they build, we collect the fee. But I wanted to talk about the one point five that we collect on, into the capital fund. With all that growth going on out there, I'm, all right, let me go back to here. I'm not in favor of building a two hundred million dollar school. I'm, I just think that is way too much, in my opinion. I don't know, using this Schingle Schultz design that's already out there, a prototype, that's going to bring that down to what you're saying, a hundred and forty?
If, if we, if we build just one academic building, yes.
Right, okay. A hundred and forty million, and like I said, I think that the growth out there and the capital dollars are going to come up as the growth goes up, the capital's going to go up. So I would be more in line with keeping at the one point four million, although a hundred and forty million, instead of doing a two, that's just sticker shock to me. And I do believe with the changes that has happened in the last election, that things are going to start coming down. I think that we don't need to commit to a two hundred million dollar project or even more at this time. I, I would be more in line with build as we need. Because we just talked about here, all of these high schools that are under capacity. Lakewood Ranch has, and you talked about how many students would be the more comfortable, no more than twenty-five hundred? At one school, one high school?
That's, that would be-
Ideal.
That's the ideal size, yes.
Lakewood Ranch is at twenty-four thirty-four, Parrish is at twenty-two fifty-one. I'm guessing Parrish is, is that including the new capacity that we just built?
Right, when that, right, when that building opens, they'll be at ninety-three percent capacity.
Okay. So that, that capacity drops down to ninety-three percent. And Lakewood Ranch, we didn't do any more capacity there, did we? We haven't built out there at all.
Yes.
We did.
At, at Lakewood Ranch, yes, we did the building in the back, the science building.
No, it's already in the capacity.
That's what I thought. That's what I'm saying, we're not waiting on a new capacity there. We're, we're a hundred and five there.
Right now.
Yep.
Right. And then, then you look at Braden River at ninety-one percent. So as the rezoning starts taking place, you know, I, I understand we have a need for another school out there, I do get that, but the sticker price. I mean, this isn't, I don't feel comfortable writing a check of taxpayer dollars, whether we're borrowing it through cops or we're doing it through capital. It's still all taxpayer dollars. And to me, I would rather go, when the growth is out there, we know it, anybody can drive out there that lives on the west side. I don't want to buy another school, I don't want to pay for another school to drive out east. And you'll say, oh, my gosh, Al, you need another school out here. It's the sticker price for me. If we did this in the same fashion as we did Parrish, and, and there's an upside to doing it all at once, I get that, but not in this current price climate. I think building as we go, open as we go, like you did with Braden River, because I had just moved here when Braden River, it was open in two thousand and seven. Am I right?
Five, seven-five.
Five, what, pardon me?
Two and five.
It opened in two oh five?
Yeah.
Okay. I was, I came here in two thousand and eight, so they were adding the third class, I believe.
No, no, there was, nothing's ever been added to the original-
No, 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 I mean, students.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they're now a junior class and-
Right, it added the junior, because I remember that was the talk of the community I lived in, the, yeah. Oh, it's going to get busy, it's going to get busy. Matter of fact, I wish there was a light right there at that exit. It's so bad. Not the one with the racetrack, but the next one down by the Lakewood Pleasant Lake RV Resort. There. That traffic gets so bad there, I can, I saw so many, that short time I lived there was like six months. I saw so many accidents with students.
It did change how you exit from there, so you can't make a left turn out of that anymore, where the accidents-
Okay.
That has, that has been changed with traffic.
All right. So, so I, I know we need this school, we already have the property, and if we're going to use a design, I want to go with the lowest cost design possible, simply because it costs so much for somebody to come in, an architect to do, that prototype process. If we already have it, somebody else has it, we got the property, we can put almost what we need out there. I say go with using some, the prototype that's already done, whether it's our, our district, another district, do that. It, it's just crazy to, we all see how much architects and, and design cost is, it's, it's not cheap. It's not cheap. And that's thrown into this price too, so I'm saying use a prototype we already have. I wouldn't want to go beyond a hundred and forty-five million. That's my thought. Sorry.
No, no, you're fine. I want to make sure you're done.
I'm done.
Okay. I didn't want to jump on you. All right. So, I just want to confirm the, the Parrish Community template is the, the cheapest one we've got, right? That's the one that we're looking at?
It's the most current, up to code, and, yeah.
All right. I've been out there for a class transition, stood out there, watched all the kids when I did my tour a couple weeks ago. The flow is great. Having, you know, been on high school campuses where it's not so great, and you're like, got kids running into each other, the flow out there is wonderful. I really like the design out there from both a teacher standpoint and an administrative standpoint. So using that footprint, I think is, is great. And having those two pads ready to go, and starting with the one building, I think is wonderful. Ms. Bray has talked in previous, a previous meeting about borrowing of other courts and, and such, and you've talked about at, I think it was Lakewood Ranch, where they borrowed the tennis courts from the community, and then there are people standing outside waiting because the kids are playing and they're getting annoyed. So, you know, obviously, I would like to avoid that because we don't need community people getting angry at our students who are doing what they're, they're to do as well. I know that they, and I've kind of lost track of who said what now. But with, with the high schools being, I would not be comfortable with them being at near capacity at ninety or ninety-five percent. I would love to see every zone at, in the, the light green to, to the dark green. That, that's where I'd like to see everybody, so we can grow everywhere. There's room everywhere for students. Whether or not we'd be able to achieve that, of course, is, is completely, you know, up to numbers and shifting maps and, and all of that stuff. But if we could get everybody to, you know, eighty-five percent, then we know we have room for growth everywhere, particularly out east, where, you know, as, as Ms. Bray said, it's just, it's growing like crazy. You can't, can't turn around without seeing something brand new every week. But, you know, as, as Ms. Scarborough said, when, when you get to that ninety-five to over a hundred percent capacity, even if twenty-five hundred is, is ideal, that's not always practical. We, we have breakfast, or we have lunch, pardon me, at, starting at ten or ten, ten or ten-thirty in the morning, so we can get all the kids through. We, we add more kids, you're starting breakfast, lunchtime at nine-thirty in the morning, which means they're not done. And then by the time they're finally done, now everybody's finally eaten. We had at Southeast, we staggered, we had three lunches, all right, to rotate through three lunches. So you had lunch, and then you have kids coming and going in the middle of class, because I always seem to end up with having the B lunch, so that kids would, you know, go to A lunch, and then they come to, and that, but the B lunch kids came to my room, and then in the middle of class, they went to lunch, and then they came back in the middle of class to finish lunch, and trying to get them back on task again. Oh, my God. Try that with freshmen. Try that with freshmen, trying to get them back on task after they just came from lunch where they've been running around with their friends. So all of that is, is, we need to take into account. And if you end up having four or five lunches, so you can get these kids all in there, their academic day is getting broken up, and, and it's going to be a mess. And trying to get them back on task when they're being pulled in and out of class and to go, to go to meals, it's hard enough. That B lunch crowd was, is, is hard. And we'd have to do it again if we added a D lunch. So we have to keep that in mind, that we're feeding them earlier and earlier in the day, so that we can get them fed, so that by the time they actually are leaving school, they're starving, because they had lunch at nine-thirty in the morning, and we get out of school at two-thirty. So, you know, that's something to keep in, in to account as well. You know, we've got, we've got to be able to feed them, we've got to be able to fit them all in the auditorium for, you know, to have assemblies, and otherwise you've got to break up assemblies, or three and four and five assemblies, so that you can get all the kids together to go over different things that you have to, that you're required to do. There's so much that goes into running a high school that we, we've got to keep the population down, that, that, and, and, and I would say two thousand, I, I would cap it at two thousand, just so that you have the room. Because, you know, as we know from, from fish and everything else, that, oh, well, you've got this capacity, but, you know, but I've got an I N D class, and they can only have this many kids. So even though it says it's, we're, we've got this huge capacity, that doesn't necessarily mean that all of those rooms are being packed with twenty-five kids. They may have to have, based on who's being served, fifteen kids or ten kids, because of the abilities of the kids that are in those rooms. So, you know, and, and this is fish capacity on this, on, on our maps, so please keep that in mind. So I'm asking you to keep that in mind as well. That's fish capacity, that's not actual services being provided, and what we really are using those rooms for. It's the same thing when you go back to V P K. We've got so much fish capacity, but you can't have twenty-five V P Kers running around in one classroom. So those are just other things to keep in mind. I am in favor of getting this thing built as soon as possible, before prices go up, because I believe they will. If tariffs continue to go into effect, we need to get building materials. I don't know if any of you remember the Chinese drywall catastrophe. If any of you were here, Chad, you would have been, and if the rest of you were on the board, were here, living in Florida, and we had that happen, where our, Chad, do you remember that?
Yep.
Yeah. We got all of our drywall from China, and it all had mold in it, and they had to gut buildings, and, and then we had, construction was being pushed back and pushed back and pushed back, because we didn't have access to drywall, because it all came in from overseas. We didn't have enough built, enough created in the country for all of the construction that was going on. So there, and if, if the tariffs are going to be in effect, and they're going to raise the price of steel and all these other things that we need for building these buildings, I believe those prices are going to go up. And, and no, I'm not an economic advisor, but this is just my view based on watching growth here in Florida, and how I've seen things develop and how I've seen prices go up just over the last, and I've been here twenty-seven years. So, those are, those are my thoughts. I don't know if there's anything that I'm forgetting that, that you want to add, but, but going back to it, I, I really like the Parrish Community footprint. So I'm summing up. I like the Parrish Community footprint, I love the open layout, having the two pads there, starting with the one building and having the two pads there to add in five or ten or whatever years we need them, is the best, is the best bet, is the best use of our funds, to make sure we have all of the athletic courts there, so our kids have the same opportunities as kids at every other high school, is important to me. And to make sure that we're not overburdening our staff, because we, we don't add administrators and secretaries and other people to keep an eye on these kids. You know, you got your, your, your prin, your principal and your couple A Ps and your couple, you know, we don't have like ten A Ps that can run around and keep an eye all over campus to make sure kids aren't getting into trouble. It's hard enough trying to make sure that they're not, you know, having sex or smoking or vaping in various little corners, because- because they do. They do. That, they're gonna do it. And so you've gotta keep eyes everywhere. And the more kids we add, the harder it puts the responsibility on our administrators and our staff. And they're doing double and triple duty as it is. I mean, you've got guidance counselors who are doing testing because we have to fit them all into this window. And they don't have enough staff to do it, or there's too many kids absent, so now you gotta pull another group of kids and do. I, I don't wanna do that to our staff. They work hard enough. So, um, I don't, again, I don't know if there's anything, you wanted to respond to anything I said or, or not, but.
Yeah. So I've, I got some thoughts about, love hearing everybody's thoughts. First, let me say, um, I do believe if we were to do this, this is definitely the right footprint, right? And that I do believe if we, if we do this, that this is the right way to do it, to be able to have the, the two future spots to be able to build on. But just like when I mentioned, you know, the Braden River addition. I wanna make sure that we are going through all of our options to be able to make the most sound decision. And so some of the options that I'd still like for us to look at and consider. Uh, first one is, you know, if we go back to the slide that Mr. Chapman had on. With the total number of students.
Which one? High, high school?
With, with, where it had all SSA, uh, SSA one, two, three, four, showed all of it.
Okay.
The projections and the recent, you know, it show, it shows north, northeast, east, south, west, and all that. So when you look at, at the numbers, um, and I asked for this and I haven't, we haven't seen these numbers yet. And so, I'm not saying that this is the, the full solution. But with parish, Lakewood Ranch, and Braden River to that matter, because it's, it's almost pretty much full to where it's at now. What is the number of kids from those three at capacity or over capacity kids that are choicing out of there to go somewhere else? And maybe it's between each other, maybe it's a west school, maybe it's a, maybe it's a Palmetto, ACE program, et cetera. But how many kids are choosing out of those schools? If it's fifty kids, not a difference. If it's five hundred kids.
Big difference.
That's a big difference. That knocks that fourteen oh-nine number to now you only need, you know, nine hundred station. So, you know, with the potential growth over the next five years. So I think you have, we have to, to go back to choice. And I think that, that some of that comes back to. What are they choosing to? Where are they going, right? Like what other programs are out there that they're going to? So I go back to the Bay Shore thing, right? Like potentially, you could lose hundreds of kids from our overcapacity schools. And I'm looking at specifically north, in the northeast, east, southeast. You could potentially lose kids from out there that want to choice somewhere else. And is that currently happening where kids are trying to choice out? I think that by, the very first thing is, that's gotta be found out. Like what, if, if kids are leaving and they're, or they're wanting to choice to go to another school, obviously it's at capacity. That doesn't help us, right? Or are they choosing to leaving to go somewhere else? Those should be almost like guaranteed, yes, get out of this overcrowded school and go to one that's not. That's number one. Number two, my other thought is, as you look at these numbers. Building this school out there doesn't help us in the next five years. In the North County, that's gonna be eight ninety-six. What do we do there, right? So like, yeah, this is twelve hundred stations up to, let's, let's just say we went up to twenty-five hundred. I, being a high school teacher, mine, I wasn't an AP by any means and had to deal with, with some of that. But I believe, I believe definitely twenty-two to twenty-four, twenty-five hundred is good. You know, you go down to Sarasota County, all their high schools are twenty-five hundred, twenty-six hundred, minus Booker. So I think that twenty-five is, is a good cap for sure. I would definitely not, three thousand kids and all that down in Miami. I know Dr. Weiss, you were, you were privy to that, you know, growing up there. But in that, I think, yeah, those are, those are huge. But I look at, I look at the North County, like what? And this is the zone, right? This is gonna be the zone drawing. How, how are, and maybe in the zone drawing, we do alleviate a little bit of parish from, from this new school to help. But I just, I don't wanna get into where if, if the choice doesn't get enough kids out, the second option is obviously building this. But then what happens up north? Like, in five years, we're gonna say, man, we gotta build another high school, here's another hundred and fifty million. So I just wanna be cognizant of that. Like what, what does this zone potentially do when we start creating these zones? How is that, you know? And the reality is, I'll just tell you, I wasn't here for it. Um, but I'm, I, I know that it was a, a lot of, uh, community involvement, I'll say that. Of, of Parish's line, right? And all that sort of thing. And so I just, what do you do? You're still gonna have a thousand high school, like what is the solution for North County? Sure, we may have it for the east, but what's the solution for North County, right? And I'll go back to, to number one is, I do believe that choice, the only reason kids and, and families choose to leave a school to go to another is for some reason that other school has something that my current school doesn't, right? Program, uh, arts, athletics, whatever it is, they move for that reason. And so, this goes back to, to, to what I was talking about in like the elementary school with Stewart being so great. We, we, we need to be able to market, and we've done, we, we did some of those one-pagers. We did a really good job during Choice Fair this year, I thought. But we need to be able to market. People out east may not know of a program that's happening somewhere else because you're normally just stuck in your bubble, right? Like what you're doing. And so, um, I, I don't think choice is the solution for everything. It's not. It's not gonna be the solution because we just don't have enough seats everywhere, right? The bottom line says one thousand thirty-two, we're down. And not everybody's gonna wanna choice from out east and, and wanna drive into town or to Palmetto, whatever, to go to a program. So, I just wanna make sure we're drawing the lines. Because I think this has to be an option, like this has to be on the table, like no doubt.
How many?
We have, this has to be an option, like to do this school, there's no question. It's one of them, for sure. When we draw those lines, how are we drawing to help the north out, right? Because that's another thousand kids. And that's gonna be tricky because of the crossing the river, right? That's another cross of the river. And what do you do? Kids from Fort Hammer up in Parish are gonna come, you know, East Parish are gonna come out to this new school all the way out in Lor- I mean, you know what I mean? So, I just, I, I, what I don't wanna get into is, if we were having to do this, hundred and forty, hundred and sixty, two hundred, whatever it is. And all of a sudden, in four years, like, shoot, we gotta do another hundred and fifty million up north because we need this school. Which, I don't know how you, if these numbers are correct, I don't know how you stop, I don't know, I don't know what else you do, right? Like, I don't know what other solution is, um, than to build a school up north, another thousand kids. And I'm, I'm speaking just high school, obviously.
And we don't have.
So, so those, those two things, I wanna, I wanna make sure we consider. Number one, the choice, are we getting kids that wanna leave out of there, out of there so we can open up seats? Are we, what's the plan? And in the zoning, is that plan part of adding some of the North County to those seats? Third option, I, I, I think that's worth discussing, and, and Dr. Weiss, I think you and I kinda talked about this before. Is do we build a high school that's like a specialized high school? That doesn't maybe offer all the athletics and things like that? And that is more geared towards XYZ, you name it, right? I, I initially looked at it potentially, could you potentially build a school there that is, uh, obviously very, we're very close to LeCom. So could you do some kind of medical academy-ish, major STEM academy-ish? To where it's a concentrated a thousand kids, let's just say. And, and you're gonna pull, those a thousand kids are gonna be pulled from Lakewood Ranch and, and other places and choice into their, their seats. It may not solve everything because there's, we were predicted fourteen hundred, you know, in the hole. So, um, but I just, I, I, but could it specialize in choice? And, you know, I, just, there could be other options. I just wanna make sure we exhaust all of our options before we spend a hundred and fifty, two hundred million dollars on a school. Because I do agree, it is a sticker shock. It is a lot of money. But you think about it, in short five years since Parish was built, I think we did ninety, ninety-seven million for Parish, was it? Something in that range, mid nineties? So we've already almost doubled or, or did, did double if we built the whole thing. So, uh, within five years. So you definitely don't obviously wanna wait because of pricing. I'm just, I'm just really, I'm really torn, to be honest, like, because I just don't know, I, I just don't know what. I don't know what the best, you know, option is. I do think, I do think though that, that making sure we've done everything we can to get the choice kids who wanna get out of there, get out of there. The, that the potential for another, like we think about another high school, and I don't know if that's, if that's like, uh, like we would with Bay Shore, like Dr. Weiss, when you mentioned with Bay Shore doing like a, um, a questionnaire. Would you, what's your interest in a school like this or whatever? And maybe don't get that much interest, like a specialized, you know, like a medical, you know, with LeCom or STEM or whatever. Because obviously what comes with this capital is also operation, right? There's no question. So that's kind of, that's kind of where, where I'm at now. I, I do think if we go traditional, like a traditional high school. I mean, I think you gotta have, you gotta have athletics involved in it. I, I, I don't think going across the street to Premier, um, is, is a, is a very good option. I don't think it's viable with everything that Premier's about to expand. They're gonna want tournaments out there all the time. You're never gonna be able to get usage of it, truly. You go back to, to Lakewood Ranch, um, I think Lakewood Ranch probably has more of an issue than Manatee, who has off-field stuff. Palmetto's had some, some issues with Blackstone. But you go back and look and like, you know, the county, if they have a tournament come in, a baseball at Lakewood Ranch's complex, that's money that's coming into the county, that they're gonna try to get in there. And then your baseball team can't practice or softball or whatever it is. So I would, I would prefer not to necessarily have the MOUs. I mean, sometimes it works, sometime you just is, and it's, it's, it, it does work out sometimes. But I think that's more of a headache than needed. But I do think that this is, this is, uh, this is a, a tough decision because it is a lot of money, a lot of taxpayer money. I just wanna make sure that, that we've gone through all of our options to say, you know, choice only alleviates two hundred kids. Uh, you know, adding Braden River only adds, you know, you said like a four hundred station, right? So, you know, all those sayings, and we're still short X a thousand, whatever. It is what it is at that point. Like that's, that's your only solution. But I just wanna make sure we're going through all of our options to make sure that, that, um, that we're making the right decision. Because again, the last thing that, that you want, at least in my opinion, is to build this new school. We still have schools under capacity and, and we're not, we're not moving kids, whether it be for program reasons or choice, et cetera, away from these overcrowded schools. Cause if you did do the, as Mr. Tatum was saying, if you did do, let's just say it was like the two forty, ended up being that, the next five years we added. We, and we, we still don't make a dent up in the north and we still gotta add a thousand seats to a high school in the next five years up there. Where are you gonna do it? I mean, Parish, I'm sure there's land on Parish, but it's not like in the major campus anymore. It's kind of off, like by the fields and stuff. So, um, yeah. It's, it's, uh, it's not a, it's not a easy, I don't think it's an easy solution of, hey, let's just build it. Um, because I think there, there could be some avenues to kinda help. But I, I just don't see. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't see how you, you can't build something. Like we gotta build something.
Yep.
The, uh, parish prototype. When you go up all, all of that glass that's in the front, would that still be in the prototype? Or would that be more of a, I don't know if that is all safety glass. I don't know what type.
It isn't.
It is not?
I mean, it's, I mean, not, not safety glass, ballistic glass, no, it's not. So I mean, we'll probably make some modifications.
Right, that.
Entry.
Right.
And that's what we're doing.
Okay. And on your site map, uh, the property, I mean, you got one, two, three retention ponds on this map. Is that, we have to have that? Because I don't think we have three retention ponds on other sites.
Well, th- this isn't an engineered solution yet because we haven't started that.
Okay.
So they're just showing that we've got room to get what they would estimate as the extent of retention that we.
Okay. And then to the, I'm guessing to the west toward Lorain Road, the little green area that you would actually have access from Lorain Road into that spot or from Fifty-Ninth Avenue.
Right, yeah.
Right.
That, that parcel.
How, how big a parcel is that again?
Eighteen, eight, or eighteen and a half acres.
Eighteen and a half acres. To Mr. Choate's point, Chair Choate's point. Of having something specialized that would be a feeder to LeCom into the medical, uh, field and all of that. That could be a future site for something like that. I'm just saying, I don't know.
The open field?
Yeah, the open, that eighteen point right here is where I'm talking to the west. I don't know, cause the way I was listening to you was, okay, build a specialty kind of school that would be a feeder to LeCom and not have athletics at all. Is that kind of the direction you're going?
An option could be yes for that. I'm not saying I'm a hundred percent for that, I'm saying.
Right, I'm just saying that was an option.
Yeah, like if you took the school print that they have, is still there, you would minus out all the fields, et cetera. Because, you know, this potentially, I guess.
And this is why I was asking, and I'm going to you on that, because out of the student population, not everyone's in a sport. There's a lot of non-sport kids. I would almost say, if you even looked at, like you're saying, school choice into, okay, they're here for this academic program or that academic program or into the sports program. I would guess that the academics side would be a stronger case than it would be a sports. Cause we got a pretty good sports program at.
And I think you could potentially, if you did wanna play a sport and there wasn't one there, you could.
Right.
Go to a school to play that, but not necessarily attend that school.
Right, so that would have to be one of those. I don't know if I would eliminate the sports fields and all of that because, um, I think that it would end up being a sport. But I like the idea of having a specialty, this is just all total hundred percent academics, there's no sports here. I think you would get a lot of students that would choice to that. That's, that was primarily the direction I was going. If you had just total academics, no sports at this site, you would probably have a lot of students that would choice to it. That would come from Parish or Lakewood Ranch or Braden River. I don't know that, that's just an assumption, but I would hate not to build the sports because there was a demand for it at the same time. Uh, but that eighteen and a half acres, what? And I'm just a little darker green, and we're gonna call it army green in the middle, is that a wetland there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Is that something that we're gonna have to fill? No, it's just.
I mean, the way we've got it designed now is we're not having any impact on that wetland.
Okay, all right. So it's a wetland we have to leave, okay. So what would you predict that future eighteen and a half acres would be?
I think there's any number of uses, it just depends on what the growth patterns look like. Again, you, you, you've got just enough land there that if you needed one more elementary school someday, you've got it there.
How about middle is what I'm thinking, okay, if you've got to, I know we have all these other middles, but I'm like, okay, we're, we're talking about building a high school way out here. What's the nearest middle then would be?
K eight is just right up, K eight is right up.
You've, you've got the K eight, and then you have, um, you have Nolan just to the south.
To the south, right.
So. It's a, it, it'd be a little bit tight for a middle school, the way it's, the, the, the way this layout, you know, with that acreage that's left.
Can I jump in on that idea? So, one, I mean, I think two ideas. I laugh because the attorneys may not like this. But, uh, two ideas, they won't mind the first one. I think it could be eventually a one of our centers, like, you know, we, we've got Lakewood Ranch, obviously, right now, we're renting that from the, the chamber, and it's going really well. Um, so you could build some kind of facility out there that, um, all your academic and, and, um, all those folks instead of coming either here or the, the PSC, that they're there, they're servicing the schools that are, that are around there. Um, I think that, that would, that could be an option. So the, the, the acreage to the north of that, eighteen point five, I think it's like five or six acres to the north the county owns. If I'm correct in this, um, and you could potentially um, use that, that parcel and, and maybe partner with the county. And then a little bit of ours too, if we wanted to keep some, but you could potentially look at, at some workforce housing.
That's where I was going.
That, that, um, and I, look at the, I know the attorney. And, and so, so, um, but I, but, listen, we're gonna have, we're high, we're gonna have to hire between all these schools, you know, hundreds and if not thousands, new teachers, staff, et cetera. So you could potentially have a, have a, uh, oh, and, and I know workforce housing may get a, a, a bad image, but I mean, you could do something that matches the Lakewood Ranch, you know, facade, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and build, you know, one-bedroom, two-bedroom studio, whatever, for our new teachers coming out of college that is underpriced. They could save money on it, yada, we've had that, that before, that talk before, but those are just, those are just two, oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Those are two of my, two of my, two of my thoughts.
What kind of workforce housing? Cause I didn't realize that little parcel above that on Range Land and Lorraine belongs to the county then.
Not the part, you saw there's a house to the left, so that little corner is not, but I think.
This little bit right here, okay, the little south, southwest corner.
No, northwest corner that we don't have highlighted.
Right, right here?
Yep, yep.
Right, that's what I thought. Right.
This right here is.
Oh, the right half.
County owned.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah, the right half, next to the retention pond.
I got it. So somebody lives in this little.
Maybe potential pond, I mean, I don't know.
Okay.
It's gonna be one or not.
Oh, I know, I know.
That one's there.
That one's already there.
The, yeah, the kind of rectangular one at the top is there. I'll just check them out.
Um, sorry.
That's all right. That, that, well, that's where I was heading. I don't know, cause it's not gonna be big enough to build anything other than maybe a support center.
Sure.
Is what you're talking about and/or, uh, maybe partner with the county for workforce would be the other option that I was thinking. Cause it's, it, there's no way we could build another middle school there.
Not, I mean, not, not, I mean, over a hundred acre campus, could you do a six through twelve? Absolutely. To do that, we'd be going out for a new prototype, which adds time and expense.
Right.
Ms. Hall, you ready to let up?
Yep, um. While I like the idea of a specialized school, I wonder if anybody's considered doing an art school? Because right now, the art school is, is MSA. If you want to have the arts, music, dance, um, theater, that's, that's where the kids go that want to have the arts. We don't have any specialized school that focuses on that. We've done, I mean, and STEAM, STEM is very important, I'm not saying it's not. But if we're gonna do a polytech at Bayshore, do we want to compete with Bayshore by building something else that's the similar sort of a concept out east? Um, but anyway, so I just wanted to throw that out there as a possibility, because we don't have anything that's focused on the arts. And, and from my own kids, that, that was their thing. They were the arts kids.
Yeah.
Um, they didn't do sports, they did their academics, and they did, you know, uh, the, the art stuff. The TV production, like southeast, you know, southeast TV production, um, photography, digital design. Um, they loved those, that they took all of those classes. And to have that available, I think, uh, might be a, an idea to throw out there. Now, now my question is, do we have to decide what to do with this piece of, extra piece of land right this minute? Or can we, we can sit on it for a while, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, yeah, that was, that was it. That was the only, only comments I had.
I, I'll just add, and this is great discussion. You know, typically when you need a specialized program to draw students out for capacity, you would want to offer transportation so that that's not a burden. So, you know, it, it is something, um, and, and I think I've said before, there are some choice tools that are difficult to implement here because there's a river in the middle of the district, because there are limited north-south bridges, because our east-west.
Corridors are so.
Right, are, 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 are clogged. Um, and so there's just not as many choice tools, um, to really put a significant dent. So there, there might, there might very well be interest, and, and you might be able to build the right specialized program. Again, the question is, can the people who want to go access it? On, on the other hand, and the vice chair will remember this, we, um, when we visited Palmetto High, we met with three students. One, one went to the school, one was choicing to Palmetto from Parrish, and the other was choicing to Palmetto from Lakewood Ranch. And to the chair's point, um, those students m- made a choice because they wanted to access a Cambridge program specifically. So, uh, in, in other cases, um, families figure it out.
If we, if we did something specialized, it might be something that if they don't want to go that far out, we have to, I mean, this is something that would have to take a lot of work and, 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 you know, running numbers and transportation patterns and all of those things, but even if we turned this, is this, is this high school A? Is this, is this?
Triple A.
Triple A? Okay, I'm like, it has a name. I knew it has a designation. High school triple A into just a regular high school. Um, we could even add a specialized program to one of our, our schools in town that's more centralized. Just like with Bayshore, if we want to make that a polytech. And then it would be more centralized for, for other, other folks as well, but it's, but that was just a, a thought about the arts.
And, and of course, you know, the, art schools are, um, intriguing to a lot of families. On the other hand, you have, I mean, we have strong arts programs in all of our high schools, right? And if you draw that talent out.
That program's gonna survive.
Then, um, then, then what's, you know, how, how well do the others survive? So that would be an interesting, uh, discussion among our arts teachers.
I don't see any other board members let up to speak, so. I don't know where you want to go from here.
You kind of got the direction.
I mean, I mean, do you feel like you have a direction, or would, do you want more direct input? I mean.
I, I, I think the, the, the challenge with the, the high school is if, if we're going to, um, if we're going, if we're, well, if we're not going to do it, then it, it really falls on map drawing to try to free up some space. If we are going to do it, we need to move forward soon if we're gonna try to make the original kind of deadline that was out there of, of an August twenty twenty-seven start. We, we, we don't have a, we don't have a lot of time to ponder. Mr. Rinaldi can talk more about project schedules, but.
Uh, real quick, um, that just popped into my head, that we had on previous slides, there had been projections about other properties. Um, and to, uh, the chair's point, didn't we have like a couple we were looking at in the north for a possible high school, middle school, something?
Wait, the, the, the slide from that workshop showed two properties under negotiation. One of those is complete now, right? Because the, the purchase agreement was on the last board meeting agenda, just wasn't fully negotiated, um, the last time we showed it to you. So you've got one remaining property under negotiation, and then, um, I think long-term, we do think we'll need additional schools north of the river, but we don't have any specific parcels.
Okay, that's, I wasn't sure.
That we're, right. There's always conversation, but, uh, Mike Penley is always working on that.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if the parcels were high school size or not that we have secured in our.
Yeah, we, we, we just, we just showed perhaps the potential for, uh, I believe there, there, there was a holding space for a future elementary, a future middle, and a future high. We're not, um, we're not so far along with that that we know for certain.
Okay, thank you.
So from, from a schedule standpoint, uh, we, we've actually already been working with the architect. We were looking to get, if, if we're gonna do the reuse, we were thinking on April eighth, we would be bringing the architect's contract to you all for approval. By, um, August, um, we'll have the contractor on board, and then we'll have the GMP in November, and then start construction, uh, November twenty twenty-five with, uh, completion in August of twenty seven of what we call Phase One, which is the campus for one thousand two hundred and fifty students. So that, that's how quickly, basically, uh, the ne- the next board meeting, we would probably put it on as a amendment to the agenda to get, get them up and rolling on planning, cause we, we do have, as, as was called out, we've got some wetlands on the site, and we, we've got some flood plain. So we are going to have to do, uh, some pretty in-depth permitting of this property.
And when you say bring on the architecture, engineer, et cetera, what, I mean.
Right. We already have.
At the same time that we would be doing zones and maps and that sort of thing. The, the the cost that we would, that we would have of bringing them on to look at stuff. Would they be looking at full option like this, like what you're showing us today? Would they look at, oh, maybe a smaller footprint? Specialized school, I mean, you know what I mean, like, I know we've talked about some ideas, would they be able to work in all those parameters?
Um, yes, cause I mean, the, right now, the design is kind of a pit, a kid apart where we can move the buildings around. And they're, they're working on some options for moving the buildings around, but in essence, uh, the building with some small modifications, security related and all that. They're, they're ready to go, they just need to bring it up to most, uh, recent code. So, I mean, their, their work is, is primarily, um, getting the civil engineer moving and, uh, making sure that we get into permitting, we get in with the county for our site plan approvals and, and all that, so. And that does take, you know, six months plus typically, especially with the water management districts and the design that needs to happen.
And so, Dr. Weisong, um, refresh us on the timeline for the zones and the maps and, and that sort of thing? Like, when to present options, right?
I think, uh.
Or what you'd like to see happen.
Well, and, and, you know, it's, again, it's gonna take us some time to work through all of this and then, and then, you know, do the actual mapping. Um, the calendar's pretty full already, so, um, we also, um, we're also sensitive to all the things that are happening at the end of the year, um, and making sure that we don't drop maps on the public at a, at a time when, uh, we really need kids focused. Uh, and so I think we, I, I think the timeline that Mr. Chapman and I have been working on would put, uh, maps out to the public probably in late May as the school year is winding down. And, um, you know, we, we, we hope to finalize that timeline in the next couple of weeks. Just, you know, we'll need to process everything we've heard today and kind of get it in, in workflow. But if there's additional data that you think you need, you know, to make a decision on whether to even invest in the architect to do the initial layout, we can certainly prioritize that data. Uh, I, uh, we have been working, Chairman, on the choice in and out data. It's a little bit, um, it's, it's, it's many reports that have to be pieced together. Um, ultimately, uh, it's a, it's a good thing, cause we'll end up, long run, we'll, we'll build a dashboard so that we have, um, quicker access, but we do hope to get you those choice numbers fairly soon.
So, um. You, you, you just said something that, uh, so on April eighth, right, is the, is what you're, you're asking, right? So I, I just want to make sure that, that we don't start paying for something and don't use it, right?
Right.
So, so if we get, if we start, I, I I think there's, there's gonna be need for something. Like, there's no question, like, there's gonna be need for something. Whether it's what's right here in front of us in this, in this site plan concept or whatever. Will it, in, will it financially, but also just from the, from the planned concept itself, will you be able to, as you're doing the maps and figuring out the options, be able to work with engineer, et cetera, on, hey, this, these, these are these options that we're looking at, you know, full-scale school, two future site, you know, whatever. I mean, I just want to make sure that, one, we're, we're, we are getting ahead of the curve, we, we are finished, cause I, I, I think something's needed. But we're also working at the same time in conjunction with those maps and things that we're gonna be doing, you know? So, I mean, we feel like that there's, I don't know what the right word, I mean, I don't wanna say flexibility.
If I could.
But you feel, I mean, do you feel like that's, you know, because let's just say the maps come out May, middle of May, it's a month or so that, that that engineer's gonna be working. And I'm not saying this is gonna happen, but you're, you're talking about like, you know, there may be ABC map, D works, we've created D map, has a little bit of everything, right? Whatever. So, so I don't want the engineer to be so far at that point, where like, oh, well, huh, we're already past point option A, we can't do option anymore, cause we've already gone past. And I'm not saying they will, I don't know the timetable on that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the big, the big piece is, uh, we need to be into the Southwest Florida Water Management District by the first week in June.
Okay.
So, um, we, we need to at least show what the extents of the building pad are gonna be so that they can run their, their calculations. So really, it's not even being driven by the architecture or the revision, it's being, it's getting into the water management district. With the unique features of this site.
Okay.
Okay.
I just, the timing of all of this is what's, where I'm stuck. If we had a, if we had already gone through to see what these maps are gonna look like for the rezoning. And I mean, is there gonna be a map? Cause you're saying this is gonna be completed Phase One by May of, or June twenty twenty-seven. We're rezoning for June, for, for that twenty twenty-seven school year.
We're, we're, so the elementary and the K eight rezone, right, would take effect four twenty-six, twenty-seven. Because that's when Rye Ranch and the elementary school in Artisan Lakes would open, right? And we also by that point need fully defined zones for Lake Manatee K eight and for the new Harvey K eight. Your high school, again, on this fast timeline, opens in August of twenty-seven. So the line that you would draw, you'd be a year early with that line, which is good for families, because you're showing them this is, this is who's going where. If you didn't want. If you didn't want to deal with the high schools right now, we could do that later, but essentially we get through this process and start again on just the high school maps. Which I, I think our team felt like, don't put the community through this twice. So that's why we're looking at it all together.
Or all of us.
Well, right. I, I get that part.
So, so I think, so, yes, but I mean, when, when you're in a fast-growth environment, all of these things kind of come together. So.
And I, I get that. So you're, you're wanting to put this project on the board work for the April 8th meeting, which is two weeks, right?
And again, that's a, that's a commitment to the architect, right, to work on design. That's not a construction manager and a GMP and a green light to go.
But the design is already done. We're already using a prototype design, right?
Right, but there's a.
Site work has to be.
You've got, you've got to locate the facility on this.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, moving, whether you're moving dirt on this piece of land or that piece of land, it's, you know, it's just, how many trees you gotta move, all that kind of thing is the only difference. Site work is site work.
Now, the other, if I may, vice chair, I mean, the other option is, is to delay, which means the earliest you open is 2028. At that point, I'm, we'd have to talk as a team, but I'm, I'm less confident that right now, we could produce maps that are gonna be accurate of the growth forecasts for '28. In which, so, you know, that, that kind of slows things down. The issue is, will we run out of room? If we push this off 12 more months, will we get to the point where we run out of room in Parish or at Lakewood Ranch? Because remember, if, if we get to that point where we have to close to new enrollment, then you're, then you're pushing Lakewood Ranch families, regardless of where they live in Lakewood Ranch, to Braden River. And then I'll draw your attention to Parish, right? If, if they were to run out of room, their relief is Palmetto, which is actually at a higher
Right.
Capacity percentage. Or you cross the river, but then you've got Lakewood Ranch that's almost full. Or, or again, Braden River, which probably doesn't have enough seats to be the relief for both schools. So you just.
Or you're busting kids all the way across.
Right, that's the trick, right. Which, which again, in a, in a different community without the geographic and the traffic challenges, might work out okay. Or again, you would use a choice option with transportation to encourage people to take the transfer. We're just, we're just not there with the distances and the geography that's involved. And so that's the, I mean, that, that's why it's a difficult decision.
Oh, I know. It's the geographic.
Right. And, and this is where, if we had a crystal ball, right, and we knew for sure, then, then it would be okay. But this is where also sometimes you get three or four years down the road and then people go, well, why didn't you, why didn't you plan better for this? Right? That's, that's the conversation we're having right now is, can we afford to wait another 12 months? And it's really the same issue because if, if today you said, I, we don't want a new high school, add, add that capacity onto those three high schools. He's gotta get designing right away on that because that's still gonna take 18 to 24 months. So.
We've had a capacity problem for a while at the high schools. I just, like I said, it's not the if we need it, it is, we do need it. It's the timing of all of this being thrown in. I mean, we knew the rezoning was coming. We knew we were gonna have to do another high school. I just wish the high school plan would have came, you know, a year ago maybe, because we've had the land, right? I know we talked about a future five-year plan. It's just hard to throw all of this in at once and then say, okay, we're gonna project that this many students are gonna go to this brand-new school next year.
Well, if the, and again, this, this was the timeline when I arrived. And I'm not criticizing that in any way, because if the high school timeline had been a year earlier, you'd be trying to build two elementary schools and a high school at the same time. And at some point, you stretch.
It don't have to work that way.
Right? At some point, you stretch the resources, so then the, that you, you end up not being able to get the work done. So the schedule is what it is, but the board does have the option to push it off 12 months. And then we'll, we'll deal with, we'll deal with it when we get there, if you're not comfortable with the timeline. But again, I, I do think, as Mr. Rinaldi said, the initial commitment is to the architect.
Well, and let's just say, let's say hypothetically, I'm sorry to jump in, I know you were right. Let's just say hypothetically, we do, we commit to the architect on April 8th. We get the maps, we go through the map system. We're like, whoa, 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 pump the brakes on, on the high school. And we come back 20 years from now, two years from now, make it, those architectural documents are still good.
Right.
And we're gonna have to do those regardless.
Right.
So I don't, I don't see a problem with, with, on April 8th, saying, hey, let's, let's roll with, with the, the engineer because we're gonna have to have something, even if we delay it a year, whatever, and we're figuring out other things and, you know, whatever. I, I, those are still good. I mean, I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I hope there's not expiration date. I guess I'm, it's not my privilege.
Well, on the, well, we might delay the permit because the permit
Correct.
That may expire, but yeah, we could work that.
And if we gotta help the permitting process at the county, we will. But, you know, I just, I, we can still use it. So even if, so, I, I mean, I think I'm okay with April 8th saying, yeah, let's, let's get the engineering going. Because whether we use it in six months, eight months, a year, we still need that.
Right.
But, yeah.
That's what I was gonna say. I think we should get going on it. If we want to make it a art school or a tech school or a classical academy, we could figure that out maybe later down the road. But the reality is, is to get it done on time, we need to get started. So, and if we have to tweak it a little bit, and we have to pay a little bit more to, for the architect to tweak his plans, that's fine. I would just say, we have to get started if we want it to open in '26. Or '27.
And I think as we go through the mapping process and like, things we spoke about today of, like, I'm looking at the map, the high school maps, like the little square that goes to Lakewood Ranch, is that 100 kids? Is that 200 kids? What does that do if that's removed and it goes somewhere else? What does that do to Lakewood Ranch's total now? Does that help at all? I don't know. You know what I mean? Like, there's a lot of, of variables that we just, we don't know that we will. And, but I think, I think we've got, we can start with engineer, you know, my personal thoughts.
That's where, that's where I'm gonna land. That's kind of where I was headed. Thank you.
You have any, you had any thoughts?
No, I'm good. I've been, I've been kind of, I've been kind of on and off via team since I left. But I, based on the parts that I have heard, I do concur that we have to, we have to get moving. This can't wait. I'm very leery about borrowing another 200-plus million.
We're down to 145.
Cause that's gonna turn into 350 million by the time we pay it all back. So staying nimble and creative and flexible, I think, as best we can, is the, is certainly the way to go. But that's, those are just general statements right now. I'll, I'll go back over the weekend and make sure I fill in the blanks that I missed since I've been gone for a couple hours. But I also fear a little bit, contrary to your point, I, I, I agree that growth is coming. I just fear that growth, growth is going to slow down somewhat in the pace that we've seen. So then, do we open a new high school and then it's slowly, slowly, slowly filling up? Or could we open this thing tomorrow and we just fill it up with kids who are at charters, maybe because of overcrowding or, you know? Maybe we could fill it up now, you know, I don't know. But these are just things that are weighing on me as far as which path do we take here? But, but I do agree that whatever we're gonna do, we gotta do it now.
At least start doing it.
Whatever the board decides with the, with the administration, we gotta, we gotta get started.
So I think, I think for at least April 8th, we're good. Then we'll start working everything out. So good on that. I mean, got direction, got stuff you can, team go back with and.
Yes, sir. I think we've got a lot of great input. Appreciate all the time and the discussion and we wanna try to, again, only, only have to do one round of drawing. And, and your input today helps us to get in that direction.
Awesome. Thank you. Last thing, real quick, y'all, and I put this on here just because of timing-wise. I, I attended last year this Family Cafe Conference. I attended this last year for a day. And the, the Family Cafe Conference is a weekend, no, it's not even a weekend. It's like three days and I think it's, maybe it is like Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. But it's several days of communities and businesses, et cetera, that are in the field or have a child or a sibling with disabilities. They come together in one place, there's a convention center, and there's resources. And when you go onto familycafe.net and look at it, it's the Governor's Summit on Disability and, and things like that. And so it was a really, for me, passionate about that. As some of you may know, my brother has Down Syndrome. And so it was, it was passionate for me to, it's a passion of mine. So I went to this conference. I just wanted to offer for you all to look at that. The, the caveat is, it looks like it's the days like leading right after FSBA in Tampa. So I'm not saying, so again, I'm not saying anybody needs to go. It was just something that I wanted to throw out there to you all to take a look at, to see if you wanted to go. I don't know exactly, haven't looked at to see exactly what days I'm going. I don't think we need to be there the 13th through the 15th by any means. But this is just something that's been on the workshop calendar for like a year since I went. I said, hey, I wanna, I wanna give this to everybody else. I wanna give this, you know, to, to the rest of the board to have this opportunity, so we can put it on one of the board, you know, documents to say, hey, you know, we, two of us wanna go or whatever. So just take a look at it. We don't need to have like a major discussion, but just take a look at Family Cafe, do some research on it. It's been 27 years that it, that it's been there. Just a really, really, it was really cool to hear some of his keynote speakers. Some of the stuff that they talked about with, with inclusion and, and, and the disability. Breakout sessions over there for networking and different things that, that are there. Project Edge, which is what we're doing in MTC with, with some of our students with unique abilities. Like, that is part of this functionality, right? So that's where I kind of started learning and, and went to MTC. So this is something we need to do and they were already starting it. And, and so, yeah, so I would just take a look at it. If it's something you guys are interested in, we can put it on, on the board workshop. You're the board, you know, item to, to have us go over there, so.
What's, I'm sorry, what's the website again?
Family Cafe, C-A-F-E, like, Cafe area. Family Cafe.
All right.
All right, good. Thank you all very much. Appreciate all the work. And I hope everybody has a, a great spring break. Staff, please relax a little bit.
Please.
Sit by the pool, go to the beach, something like that, right? Play golf, whatever. Relax, because when we come back, I know you guys are gonna be extremely busy and appreciate everything you've done so far this year. And to the students, have a safe spring break for sure. Be smart. And we are adjourned until April 8th.
April 8th, yeah.
Have it going.